We're here for the Fairfax Planning Commission meeting, our second semi-virtual. And in attendance, it's very good to see people in the audience again. You'll still have to bear with me while I read these protocols and notices. This meeting will be held in person and consistent with AB 361. During the declared order of emergency, the 7:00 PM meeting is also being held virtually on Zoom. It will be broadcast on channels 27 and 29 and live streamed on or www.cmcm.tv/27. How to participate in the meeting in person? If you're experiencing any symptoms, of course, you should stay at home. Face coverings are strongly recommended for attendees. And all attendees are encouraged to be fully vaccinated. We will limit the group to 50% of room capacity. Everyone seems to be spread out nicely. And we should socially distance as recommended by public health authorities. I think we're doing pretty well. How to participate in the meeting virtually? For those of you on Zoom, join the webinar and us and use the raise hand feature to provide verbal public comment on Zoom. The webinar ID is 858-7225-7306. Or you can join us, https backslash backslash us02web.zoom.us backslash J 858-7225-7306. You can also call in by telephone at 1-669-900-6833 and use the webinar ID stated previously. If you receive a busy signal, call plus 1-346-248-7799 and press star 67 before dialing to hide your phone number. To speak during the public comment time, press star 9 and you will be added to the queue of speakers and unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Our tech, Tamela Fish, will advise you when you can unmute. Before 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting, you may have submitted email written comments to the Planning Commission. Comments will be provided to the Commission prior to the meeting and will become a part of the meeting record, but will not necessarily be read out loud. 7:00 PM, we will call the meeting to order. I get to use my gavel. Yay! And if you could, well, we have to call roll first and then we'll approve the agenda.
Okay, Green?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Jansen's absent. Newton?
Here.
Swift?
Here.
Chair Fagoso?
Here. Thank you, Lynda. Next, we will approve the agenda. Do commissioners or staff have any suggested changes for the agenda?
I do. I'd like to add commissioner comment and requests after minutes.
Yes, those are you. Yes, we usually have those. And if I forget, I'm sure you will remind me about that. Thank you, Commissioner Swift. With that, can you move to approve the agenda with that?
I move to approve the agenda with that change.
And can we have a roll call on that, please?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, we have a first and second, Swift and Newton.
Okay, Green?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Chair Fagoso?
Aye. Again, a little ditty on meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order. And the Commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at Commission meetings. The Commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of Commission members, staff, or members of the public and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Public comments, first of all, we will move to public comments. This is for anyone wishing to address the Commission on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the Commission. You must do so by email or in person via Zoom in the manner described above. Presentations will be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the chair. All interested persons are invited to participate in order to give all an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view. Members of the audience should, one, limit presentation to three minutes; two, provide their comments by email as described above; three, state your view and concerns succinctly; and four, submit any new documents to the planning staff first via email to be entered into the record. And there are no consent items, so there's no consent calendar. We will now open the public comment period for those of you either in the audience or on Zoom who have anything to tell us about something that is not on our agenda today. If you're in the audience, if you could, I'm remembering what we used to do is stand up, come to the mic, start a queue. And if we don't see anyone coming forward in the audience, then Tamela can let us know if there's someone on Zoom or on the phone who has a comment for us.
I see no hands online, Chair Fagoso.
Okay, then, I'll make sure I have my, let me just make sure I have my pad silenced. Okay, then, so we will move to the first public hearing item, which is 217 Scenic Road, Application 2208, request for a conditional use permit to remodel a 1,788 square foot home by converting a storage area to a bathroom, raising a portion of the roof to add clear story windows and expanding a deck 77 square feet. No expansion of building area would occur. Application number 00112156, RS6, Single Family Residential Zone. The owner is Nicholas Paves. Can we have the staff report, please, Lynda?
Okay, so Norma described the project already in general. And a little background, this site is pretty steeply sloped. It's about 5,400 square feet and it has an average slope of about 70%. It slopes down from Scenic Road. And the existing home was constructed in 1972. And then in 1979, the town council granted a conditional use permit for the addition of the upper floor living space, which is adjacent to the garage or car deck area and a variance to the side setback to allow the addition to have a 3'8" setback from the side property line. So as Norma mentioned, the project requires a conditional use permit because it does not meet the minimum size and width requirements of the RS6 zone based on the slope of the property. So the first item that one of the remodeling parts of the project would be converting the storage area in the upper floor to a half bathroom. So that's not going to have any, it's an existing space, so it's not increasing the size of the home. A minor exterior change would occur at the back of the home and that would be with the addition of a small window. This isn't going to infringe or decrease any privacy for any neighbors. It would provide an additional amenity for the home and enhance the usefulness of the upper floor because currently there is no bathroom in that area. So raising a section, so they're going to add clear story windows. And to do that, they're going to need to raise a section of the roof. It would be on the kind of toward the front of the home as it faces the street on the right side. And it would, the roof would be raised by approximately 4 feet 10 inches. And that portion of the roof that would be raised is already approximately 22 feet 2 inches high as measured from the natural grade to the top of the roof. So this 4'10" increase in height that's being proposed is going to result in, you know, approximately a 27-foot-high roof. And that's under the 35-foot height limit for the RS6 zone. So this is just, the homeowner is proposing to do this to provide better natural light and a more spacious feeling. The room is somewhat constrained now by low ceiling beams. And the raised portion of the roof would match the existing structure with respect to colors, material, and architectural design. And no new lighting is proposed for that. All right, so modeling items. And then, so another part of the project is to extend. There are three floors to the home, a top floor, a middle floor, and a lower floor. And the middle floor has a deck that expands the entire, like, back of the house on that floor. And it's, they want to expand that, the homeowner would like to expand that deck. Not the entire portion of the deck, but only as you face, you know, on the east side. So it'd be pushed out by about 4 feet for a total of 77 additional square feet of deck space. So after that, I mean, that deck is currently 163 square feet, so the resulting deck would be 240 square feet. And it would extend out 11 feet from the home. And that's roughly about from like the middle of the home to the eastern side or maybe 2/3 of, so it's not the entire floor. And this deck extension would be about 35 feet 6 inches to 37 feet from the nearest neighbor at 219 Scenic Road. So due to the angled orientation of the home on the property and the tapering of the deck extension, as well as the distance of about 35 and 1/2 to 37 feet, the deck would not infringe on the privacy of the residents at 219 Scenic Road. So there are other homes in the area I don't know about immediately adjacent to that home because the hill is so steep and the houses have like one floor and they don't really have it right next to them. But as you walk down the street, you can see homes in the neighborhood that have large decks that extend out from the houses. And due to the kind of hilly windy nature of Scenic Road, the expanded deck area would be above some of the roadbed elevation as visible from the west and the rear, but it would be partially screened by trees. So it wouldn't be that visible from Scenic Road. And there would be a minor amount of 6.3 cubic yards of excavation because the project also proposes to reinforce the decks that are there. So the project is consistent with all the zoning standards, such as the setbacks, including the combined setback, the size and height standards, and the overall grading or other site disturbance is very modest. There is a known northern spotted owl nesting site within a quarter mile of this property. So there is a condition in the resolution to account for that in construction during the nesting season for the spotted owls to not disturb them. So that concludes the staff report. And the recommendation is to conduct the public hearing and to move to approve application number 2208 by adopting resolution number 202212 that set forth the findings and conditions for the project approval.
Thank you, Cara. Maybe we could start by seeing if commissioners have any questions or comments? The staff report, oops, am I on my, Commissioner Newton or Green, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question, a couple of questions, actually. In the draft reso, in the CUP findings section, there's some language that says that the, let me see if I can find this. It says the existing structure meets all the zoning requirements. But there's also, it says, okay, so this is bottom of page one, under conditional use permit findings, paragraph one. And it says, "The proposed remodeling project complies with all underlying zoning standards, such as setback, including combined setback size and height." But it also said previously, "The height, which exceeded the underlying zoning, had been approved by the town council in 1972." So I think if the town council approves a variance for height, then it doesn't comply with the underlying standards. So I just wanted to see, Cara, if you have a response to that.
I do. So, sorry, I mean, to cut you off. So the house, when it was originally constructed in 1972, it was constructed and it did not without, it was, a building permit was issued in 1972 and it didn't meet the standards at that time. But the building permit was issued anyway. So it was approved like that with a building permit and it didn't go through the use permit process. There was a staff report that was prepared in '79 that even acknowledged that, the one that was prepared for the, that where the homeowner at the time asked for a variance to the side setback requirement when they wanted to enclose. So originally, the area where the, where the raised portion of the roof is going to go was open. It wasn't a room. And in 1979, the homeowner at that time wanted to enclose it because they were having issues with, according to the staff report, like, you know, drainage, I guess there was leaking and they are having problems. So they requested to enclose it and they needed a variance because they didn't meet that minimum side setback. So they were actually denied by the Planning Commission. They appealed and the town council approved their request. So the house was constructed, maybe not meeting the standards at the time.
Okay, yeah, I was specifically referring to the height, but that's fine. I wasn't.
Oh, okay, sorry, I was confused because the height wasn't the, but the height that the house is, that 30, where it exceeds the height limit, the 35, 6, that it was built like that.
At a time when it was legal to be that height?
No, it was, it's a building permit was approved.
So a staff.
So a staff person in error issued a building permit for a house that didn't meet the height requirements and the town chose to not do anything about it and allow it to expand later on. So it's something that we just live with at this point.
Okay, all right. But I just wanted to clarify that because the draft reso suggested that it met all the requirements. And I understand the long and sordid history of why it doesn't meet the requirements, but I don't want to reflect that it met them. So anyway, when we get to that point, we can talk about it. The other questions I have, in the existing site plan, in the attachment, this is something that is referred to by the neighbors at 219, 219. You know, they've got three different drawings. They've got the alternate deck expansion, the existing site plan, and the proposed site plan. And I have two questions about this. First off, only one of those, the proposed one includes the trees. And I, and that confused me. But we're not dealing with any tree removals here for this at all. Was, I just want to confirm that. And then for the alternate deck expansion, do you know whether or not, or why, A, they have an alternate deck expansion on these drawings? And B, why they're not going with that, given the correspondence we received from the neighbors at 219?
So the alternative deck expansion is shown just to show how if they put it on that side, that they would not meet the setbacks. So it's just supposed to be there to, it's, it's just there to, can't think of the word right now, but it, yeah, illustrate what it would, what, you know, it would not meet the setback requirement if it was on that side.
Excuse me, can you identify what page, what drawing you're referring to?
Yeah.
Look five, there's three different drawings.
Yeah, it's A21, page A21. And it's on the left side, it's number three, alternate deck expansion.
And then, Cara, do you have an answer about the trees? Is it just they're reflected in one drawing and not the other?
I think that's just, they just didn't, I think that was just omission, yeah. They just put it on the, yeah.
And there's nothing that's going to be proposed with respect to those trees, right?
No, no, no. The trees are actually there to show, kind of illustrate that there is a, something, like a little bit of a screening with the trees. And I think they just didn't carry that, the architect didn't carry that over to the other two.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Other commissioner questions or comments? Okay, I, okay, so I'm still confused about the deck expansion. That was helpful. I see the alternate and the proposed. So my question, I guess, is.
Is your mic off? Your sound just went like you're too far.
No, I just, I just got too far from it. My question is, what is the actual proposed extension of the deck? How far does the proposed deck extension go out from the existing deck in that central portion of the building?
So it would, oh, you mean in the middle?
Okay, so I see the proposed, the proposed middle floor plan is the one. And my question is, one of the letters we received indicated that there was, unless I misread it, that there was an 11-foot expansion. And yet, on the plans, I see that the existing deck is in fact 7 feet, 7 feet. And the extension is proposed to be 4 feet for a total depth of 11 feet.
Correct.
Of the new proposed deck.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because the letter that we received indicated that the extension would be 11 feet out, unless I misread it or it was not adequately represented. But, okay, we cleared that up. And then, what about the photographs? Do commissioners have any questions about the photographs, photographs we received of the, from inside of the windows from the adjacent property at 219? It shows their windows. Is there a, okay, on 217, is there a new window above the deck with the overhang that's proposed to be extended and lengthened?
So there's an existing window that is 3 feet 4 inches, or sorry, 3, 3 feet by 4 feet. And the proposal is to extend it to 3 feet by 6 feet. So it would be a 2-foot extension.
That, I see that clearly in the neighbor's letter, where we see a photograph of their bedroom and the extension of the deck appears to clearly be within sight of the bedroom and perhaps private spaces in the adjacent property. Did staff check into that by chance? Okay, sure, sure. There's a question by 219 Scenic about sightlines between the proposed deck and window expansion, indicating that the expanded window and deck puts the deck and window out beyond the face of 219 so that there's a very direct view from the window and the deck right into their bedrooms. There is somewhat of a view. The decks actually on both properties seem fairly comparable, but the extension bumps it out so that you get a much clearer view of the neighbor. Did anyone go out to check on that?
No, I didn't check on that. I, I mean, to me, the, the deck is extending and that's what's being requested. And it's already extending. And it looks like, I mean, if you look at this one picture, I mean, it looks like it's kind of similar to the deck that the neighbor is taking the picture from.
It's hard to, it's hard to really see the angles, but, okay. We can keep that in mind. Any other, Commissioner Newton, Newton, did you have any other comments or questions?
I have comments, but I think I can reserve those until after we've had a chance to talk to the applicants and maybe hear any public comment.
Okay. Not hearing any other questions from commissioners. Why don't we then, is the applicant here? Would the applicant like to speak up? Would you like to come forward, please? Tell us your name and.
Yeah, hi, I'm Nick Pavis. I live at two one seven scenic road. And yes, I'm looking to make some minor modifications to bring the property up to date. I'm not, I haven't seen any pictures of windows, so I don't know that I can speak to those. There is no intention to change a window other than to lower one from knee height to floor height. And I don't know. I don't know how that, that changes. And I don't know if there's.
Thank you, Kara, for showing those to him.
Right. Yeah, so I mean, it's going to be lowered from waist height down to the, to the floor. I, I can't imagine that that's a problem. And then, yeah, I mean, it's just an additional four feet. I can't, I can't really see from, from these photos whether they're.
Well, only a problem apparently to your neighbor.
Right. So, yeah, um, I, I don't know. I think Kara did a great job of explaining the project, going into detail about what I would like to do. And it's just a case for me to understand if there is an objection. You know, how do we, how do we resolve that? What, I, I'm working with Richard Rushton. He's a local architect and he, he, he lives a couple of streets up the road. He was very adamant that we don't do anything that's going to require, you know, that we don't go out of ordinance, that we meet all ordinances. And to one of the comments that we received about the previous non-conforming, the new section of roof that's raising up is not part of that non-conforming part. And I think that that's what was meant in the staff report by nothing that we're proposing is, is adding space, adding square feet or non-conforming. And so really, it's just down to, is, is adding four feet of legroom to my deck a problem for somebody's whose house is thirty-seven feet away? I, I can't answer that. That's why I'm here. And hopefully, um, there's some, um, good history on, on how to, uh, how to, how to make a call on that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Newton, is that you hitting the button?
Yes, thank you. Chair for you, so appreciate, appreciate it. Thank you very much for, for coming. If I'm correct, that, that window on the top floor is, um, what's on the other side of that window? Is that the study?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And then, um, the view that, uh, I think the neighbors are concerned about this reflected on the plans, if we're looking at the, um, elevation drawings, is the proposed east elevation? That would be what they're looking at there? Is that right?
Yes. Yes.
Can someone identify the page number we're referring to, please?
It's, it's page five of five, eight, seven point one. Seems to be the east side, what we're calling the east side of the, of the structure. And, um, I take it that the extension that we are discussing is not really, I mean, it's kind of just drawn with, uh, I guess we have to compare it to the east elevation on the top row in order to see the, the extension itself on that one, right?
Yes.
On that deck that's coming out. And, and, um, and I heard from our staff that the, putting the extension on the other side of that floor, that's sort of the option that's presented on, oh, which, the, um, A two point one, that was rejected because of the effect on the setbacks on the other side of the property. And, um, you know, when you look at that property, isn't that, uh, I guess the west side, isn't that like vacant or just like a driveway or something?
It's a vacant, it's a vacant lot. There's a creek that runs down there.
And it's not, it's not yours, is it?
No, but it actually belongs to the house opposite, which is a little peculiar, but that's just the way those lots got.
Cause I'm just wondering if, if, you know, from my perspective, the concern of your neighbors that your proposed redesign is going to allow for more direct sightline into their bedroom, you know, to me, I don't know, you know, I might personally would want to talk with the commissioners about whether we would rather see the setback on the other side, you know, infringed upon than the, um, deck that would give the, the better sightline into your neighbor's, into your neighbor's bedroom. So I'm just wondering, you know, you have these, the proposed site plan and the existing site plan. And, but have you looked at the alternate deck expansion site plan? And, and how would you feel if you just moved the bulk of that extension over to the western side?
Is that to me?
Yes.
Yeah, no, this was, uh, so this was something we explored and that's why it is on the plans. Because I did want to make sure that everybody's voice was heard and nobody felt that, um, that they weren't, they weren't being heard. And if they had fears or concerns about anything, I wanted to make sure that people, uh, anyone involved might, uh, feel better about the project. So, uh, I went back to Rich and I said, you know, can we not put the extension on the other side? Because the combined setback is still, you can still do a combined setback of twenty feet. But just shift it over to the, um, west side. There is a vacant, vacant lot. I mean, it's, I think it's an unusable lot because it's, it's a corner lot. The house is on a corner lot. So I, I don't know. Practically speaking, I think that that's a perfectly reasonable alternative. But I, I just don't have the experience of, of what that means in terms of, um, having to vote on variances or permits for that to happen and additional cost involved. So it's, it was kind of there in case this conversation came up. My, my personal feelings were that once the story poles went out, we could see that there was no view into the neighbor's house and they are far away. And, and, you know, that's why the proposed site plan is, is still this one. If this, if this is not some, sorry, if this is not something that can be, um, agreed upon, then yeah, that is, that is a good question. Is, can we, um, move forward on the alternate deck expansion on the west side? Which is exactly the same. It just shifts over to the west and maintains the combined twenty feet setback.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your frankness. That's all I had.
Not, can I just jump in and make sure that everybody understands that?
Yes, please.
If, if you do, uh, consider going the route of changing the deck, this will have to be continued because we didn't notice this for a side setback variance. So that will delay things. And you have to, you know, you need to think to yourself, do you feel capable of making findings to, you know, is there a physical reason in the land itself that's requiring them to have to build into the setback? Basically what you have to be able to do is make the legal findings.
Because otherwise the setbacks are not impacted?
The way that the proposal before you doesn't encroach into setbacks.
It would be a separate variance and should be noticed as such.
Right.
Thank you, Linda.
And I, you know, on other, on other decks, I don't know if you want to talk about this, but on other decks, when this situation has come up, you've asked them to put up a screening barrier on the side that the neighbor is object, you know, thinks their privacy is going to be invaded on. And that seems to have worked for a lot of projects.
Well, how does the applicant feel about that?
Um, the problem, the problem with putting a screen there is because, uh, if you, if you look at the, the site maps, our deck actually faces away from the neighbor's deck. Um, so the actual view that I have through that window is across the valley. And if I put up a screening window, then that would, I would not have a, it's kind of like, you're trying to solve the problem of, of screening some privacy from the neighbors. But in fact, what you do is you, you block my view of the valley. So.
If, if I may, I think the question was, um, not screening the window itself, but screening, putting some kind of a screen on the east side of the deck.
So yes, I do understand that. It's just that my, my kitchen and dining area looks straight over and out the window and across the valley and not into the neighbor's area.
Commissioner Green has his hand raised.
Yes, Commissioner Green.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the applicant if, if the picture, the, the top, let's see, I think it's the first picture in the letter from the neighbor. You know, the first with the big blue sky and the yellow window and the yellow portion of deck there. If he, if you think that's accurate. And, and then another question is, is the wood looking, so there's a yellow portion of the deck in that picture? And then behind it, close to the house, attached to that, there's a wood portion of the deck, it looks like, right? So are you, so, um, my question on that part of it, part two is, do you use that, that other part of the deck now? And would, would, is there not then this, neighbor lack of privacy issue existing now before the yellow portion is at?
Right, and, and those would be my comments too. Which is, you know, I don't, I don't want to comment too much on, on how, representative this is of the issue. I, I think sometimes we struggle to represent issues that we're having. And I'm not sure that this represents the issue for the very reason that you state, which is that the existing deck, the wooden portion is already there. So one may stand right there, um, already. And I can't quite see how far that's going out. I did put up story poles and the story poles out there now, which would have been better if, if they were in the photo. But, but yes, I, you know, I, I, I'm more inclined to agree with what you're saying that, um, adding, adding four more feet that's glancing away from the neighbors with the deck already facing away from the neighbors. I just don't feel that that suddenly creates a window onto, onto someone's privacy.
Okay, well, to me, from this picture, and maybe it's a little deceptive. It, it doesn't look like the deck faces away from the neighbor. It looks like both you can see each other from your decks.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, sorry. I, I, yeah, I didn't mean to represent it as facing off, off, off to the west. I'm sorry.
I understand the windows that are on the back wall of the house, they're face out and they wouldn't see the neighbor. Only the top yellow window in that picture would see the neighbor, but it sees it now too, right? There's, there's a window that's not as low, but there is a window there now.
Right, and that, that was, yeah, that is some of the source of my confusion there is, is I, I'm not sure how going from waist height to floor height creates a, a window into someone's privacy. I, I'm confused at that, so I don't really have an answer for you.
I was too, and that's why I asked, based on this photograph. Okay, thank you.
No other comments from commissioners? No other comments from the applicant? Thank you very much. There, we have a comment. If, if you have no further comments, sir, you can sit down at this point. We have no questions at this time for you. And I see a hand raised, please come forward and tell us. Oh, well, okay, yes, we're now opening the public comment officially. Thank you, Commissioner Swift. We're opening the public comment and we have our first speakers here.
Okay, well, uh, my name is Daniel McCormick. This is my wife, Mary O'Brien. And we live at two nineteen scenic road. We have done some view studies and we have a, a, a piece, a short piece that we'd just like to read to you.
First, I'd, I'd just like to mention the sentence in the staff report, the expanded deck area would be further away from the nearest neighbor at two nineteen scenic than the existing deck. Now, the only way that can happen is if you approve the alternate, which is the western deck. Because there's a deck there now. And if they expand the deck, I think that, you know, we've got a little east-west thing going on with the, the report. We're east of this proposed project. So our building is east of it. If they build the deck on the east side, they won't be further away from us than the existing deck. Just want to point that out. But, um, and the pictures were taken when the story pole threw up, so they're in the pictures. Our deck is only eight feet deep. We reduced it from a ten-foot deck about ten years ago into an eight-foot deck. It works just fine. We just want to make two points here. And it's about this deck and the confusion of which side it should be on. I know you're going to have to approve a resolution for this. And I think we better get the direction straight. Now, I took that second picture standing in our shower. And I have a clear view of the story poles. I have less of a view of the original deck. But I have a clear view of the story bowls, the, the, the large window. The thing about a floor-to-ceiling window, when you stand in a flooring ceiling window, you can stand and see the full view. A window that is only three feet by four feet, and this is being expanded another three feet, not another two feet. So it's a floor-to-ceiling window and they're usually pretty standable to get a view. We've asked Nick to, um, put screening up and he, as he stated, is worried about his view from his kitchen, which is probably about ten to twelve feet back from his deck. But we don't want a sightline into our private, we only have two bedrooms and we have a, a half bath upstairs and this is our master bathroom. And every one of those pictures was taken, yes, the angle looks funny, but I can assure you we have an approved eight-foot deck. If you walk up the street, you will see six or seven houses that are hung off the hill. I mean, they're like row houses. They're getting closer together. You don't see big decks that reach out and look inside people's houses. That's a tradition that we're asking you to consider seriously if you're going to set a precedent here, especially in that area of the scenic road. There isn't a lot of property around these houses. We literally hang off the hill at, as, as the planners have said, at a very steep angle. We went and surveyed them and even the brand-new house at two fifty-one does not see into the cottage next door to it, has three decks on it. We're asking you to approve the western deck. But we hear a lot of talk about, we're going to start it approximately in the middle of the deck or roughly in the middle of the house. We would like it to start in the middle of the deck and, and go west. We talked to Nick, we sent him an email with a very rough sketch that showed that.
We supported the project and we still do.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, the things changed and there's a, there's a window there that's floor-to-ceiling looking down on us. And, uh, the deck is extended out on, uh, on, it's, it's extended out four feet. It looks right into the, uh, master bedroom. Are they, uh, well, the master bedroom.
It looks into all of our downstairs. His, his deck is about two and a half, three feet higher than us. So that makes it even worse. You know, we, we think it's great that he's fixing this house. But the house came with problems. And in seventy-two and in seventy-nine, and now we're continuing some of these problems and exacerbating them and making them worse. And I think, you know, there's a precedent being set here. It's a very large house on a very small lot. Ours is a small house on a large lot. So, you know, we are set in the middle of our lot. We're away from both neighbors and yet we feel that this is an unnecessary encroachment. The, the, uh, east side of his house that faces us, it, the whole house is turned towards us. So he's, he's in the setback in two different points there because of this change in seventy-nine. The deck, of course, is not going to be in our setback. But when you reach it out eleven feet, you can stand there and look backwards. And that's all we're saying. If you go up the house and nobody has come up, and we wish they would, if you walk up our street and you look at cottage, new house, cottage, new house, none of them have decks that can look inside. none of them have decks that can look inside. And that's a really good reason. Views are plentiful here, privacy is not. And we're just trying to hold on to ours. The only thing I'd like to add to this is, in the planning report, they talked about the trees that are mitigating. And we have said from the get-go that these trees are wrong. We took fire safe Marin very seriously. Many of those trees are gone. But to use trees as a mitigation means that in this day and age, is not right for our town to be doing. We should not be promoting people to put trees between houses that only have 10, 15 feet between them. And we don't have, you can see in the pictures, we don't have tree cover. There's a buckeye there that gets trimmed every year. And of course, we're going to lose its leaves in about three weeks. So I think that's about it. We're just asking you not to set a precedent. And this is not, we don't feel that this is something we have to live with at this point, Lynda. I think that's, we're not going to live with it at this point if we can help it. I just don't think, I don't, we don't want to deprive Nick of fixing this house because it certainly needs it. But we think there's a better way to do it. The room that he's going to put this floor-to-ceiling window in has nine windows and two skylights in it. This room is not larger than a garage. There's no dimension, there's no dimension on the plans to say how big the room is. But there's a lot of windows in that room already.
Yeah, try to figure that out from the errors.
Yeah, I mean, I know you don't want to continue things, but I can't believe that you would actually set a resolution on some of the confusion that's here. Again, we're on the east side. So the alternate deck is the one that's on the west. And that was the deck that would be further away from our house than the original deck. Not the deck that's on the proposed. So I think there's some confusion in there when you read your own statement. But this is easy, you actually say it, you know, the deck on the east side, and then you say the deck on the west side. It just seems like, you know, there's some confusions here. And the window also is shown both as fixed and as double-hung on the plan. So
This what?
The window that's drawn on the plans is shown on one page as fixed and one page as a double-hung. So if it's an operable window, there could be a problem with small children falling out the window.
Well, yeah, and if that's just a bar, if that is just a safety bar, it's the perfect place to go lean up and look down on our deck.
And the view.
It's just perfect. Right now, it doesn't work that way.
Okay, that's our comments. Do you have any questions for us? We were the ones that sent the letter and the pictures, so.
Yes, we appreciate that. And I don't believe there are other questions of you at this time.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
Tonight, we appreciate it. We will mul this up. Any other comments from the audience in attendance this evening? Or anyone on Zoom, Tamela, that has their hand up?
This would be the time for anyone on Zoom to raise their hand. And I see no hands raised. Chair Fergo.
Not hearing any other comments, we will close the public comment period and bring it back. I believe the commissioners still have comments or questions, but the public comment period is closed.
Commissioner Newton has her hand raised.
Mimi?
Thank you, Chair Fergo. So, so, um, you know, I'm just still troubled. We've got what looks to be, I think about, you know, the slight pushing out of the deck on one side, on the east side of that floor, the middle floor. And, um, you know, in the drawings on A21 in the attachment, page two of five in the PDF, you know, we can see the alternate expansion that, as staff explained to us, was infringing upon the setback on a vacant lot that appears to be used solely for parking. And on the proposed site plan that we have in front of us, you know, the entire expansion of that deck is on the right side, on the east side of the property. So, you know, in the, in the tradition of all great deciders, you know, I'm thinking about, well, what if you just moved it in the middle? Like dead center, you know? Like, is there, is there a position of that expansion where it's not all the way on the east side of the deck? But it doesn't infringe upon the setback? If it was centered, for example, with the building, where you could still have the same square footage of expansion, but push it further away from the neighbors to the east? So that's one question for staff. You know, do we know how far to the west side of that property before that deck starts infringing on the setback?
Kara's going to calculate that. But I will express my displeasure with the combined setbacks that this town has. Because what it creates is a situation like this, where you can pretty much pick whichever side of the property you want to be the minimum five-foot side yard setback and which side you want to be the 15 with these existing houses, right? So their architect chose to show the 15 feet on the west side, right? In the, in the alternative to indicate that the deck would be in a setback. But you could also choose to put the five-foot side on that side, right? And have the 15 feet on, on the other side. And then you could do what Mimi's suggesting. You could move the deck five feet from the property line and shift it over from the neighbor to the east side, right? Did you figure out how far it would have to go? Okay, so if you make this.
Well, but I'm also thinking about the purpose behind the setback in the first place, which is to, in my understanding, the way I understand the setbacks is frankly, among other things, to provide for a bit of privacy between neighbors. Where we're not all built up right onto the edge of the property and, you know, my kitchen window is looking into your bathroom, you know? But, and Commissioner Green, when you pointed out that first photo in the letter, I hear what you're saying, but I think you're ignoring the next page full of photos, where if you look, it's almost just that yellow expanded part that is visible from inside the house. Not from inside the bedroom or inside the master bathroom. Not from standing on the deck and looking. And I think that that's something we should be taking into account too in terms of, you know, trying to figure out what the right thing to do here is. And from my perspective, if on one side of the house you have cars parked because there's a very convenient driveway for the house across the street. And on the other side, you have neighbors with a master bedroom that feel that there's going to be a direct line of sight, that, you know, frankly, the neighbors would take priority over the cars in terms of why we even want setbacks in the first place. I mean, it's just, that's from my perspective, is to sort of simplify an understanding of why we have setbacks in the first place. So I am interested in talking about that with the commission. And I understand, you know, we would have to postpone and re-notice this if we were going to ask the applicant to move that deck so far over that it infringed in the setback. But I'm wondering if there's some movement less than all the way over that wouldn't infringe on the setback. Thank you.
Did we miss anything important? I'm sorry. So if the architect had flipped the minimum and the combined, if they'd flipped the setbacks and put the five foot on the west side and put the 15 feet on the east side, there would have been plenty of room to slide the deck over. And if they moved the same-sized deck over to the west to a five-foot setback away from the vacant site, that protrusion would be 48 feet from the neighbor's deck.
And looking in the other direction as well.
Well, it's still facing the same direction. I mean, you could still stand on this deck, but you would be a lot farther away from their house. And I think the corner, I believe that the corner of the project site house would be blocking the view into the bedrooms if they shifted it that way. And if the architect would redraw and submit it that way, they wouldn't have to apply for a variance because they would not be building in the setback. That's why, that's why the combined setbacks to me have never made much sense.
Go back to what you just said.
Pardon?
Go back to what you just said. If, if the architect had simply labeled the setbacks differently.
So we have a minimum five-foot side setback. And when you're on a slope, the side setbacks, when they're added together, they have to total 20 feet. So when we have existing homes that already don't meet those setbacks, it's kind of a judgment call as to which side you decide to pick and put the five-foot required setback on, right? The five-foot setback is going to go through this house, whether you put it on the west side or the east side. Because the house doesn't meet the current, it was built at a time when the minimum side setback was five feet. So the way the architect drew it was to put the five feet on the west side and the 15 feet on the side facing down McCormick's house. I'm sorry, did I say east? I'm getting myself up here. You see what I'm saying? But if he had drawn it the other way. You didn't get it? Yep.
On the existing site plan, on page two of five, A2.1,
Yes.
Norma, if you look at that existing site plan, there's two dashed lines, right? One of them says five-foot side yard setback. And the other one says 15-foot side yard setback. It's sort of, you know, on the top of the drawing in the middle. And that's what I think Lynda is talking about. He could have put that five yard on the left side of that drawing and the 15 on the right side. Is that right?
That is correct. So if it had been drawn differently, and it can be drawn differently, the deck can be shifted over. It will maintain a 48-foot setback from the neighbor. And I believe, but I mean, we haven't, you guys can look at the drawings too. I believe the corner of the existing house will block the view into the neighbor's bedrooms and bathrooms if it's shifted over that way. If it's redrawn and resubmitted between now and your next meeting, there will be no, you know, there won't be any variance to apply for. Or if you feel comfortable enough with it, you could approve it, approve drawing three, subject to the architect, when he submits for a building permit, drawing the required setbacks differently. And then it wouldn't need a variance, you know? You would be, you would be out of the minimum five-foot setback and it would be meeting the 15-foot just swapped. Yeah.
That's, that's.
Yeah, I don't know if drawing three, maybe drawing three will get us there.
Well, just to be, just to be clear for a second, may I? So these setbacks that are in this, in page A2.1, are not cast in stone then. They are, they're simply made up by the architect? Or are they based on?
Well, they're not, they're not, they're not made up by the architect. They're in the code. It's just that when, when you go to do a set of drawings, it's a judgment call as to which side you're going to put the minimum five foot on and which side you're going to put the 15 foot on.
Right, because of the combined ability.
Yeah, I mean, they actually, yes, they could have, they could have drawn, you know, different setbacks. And if they wanted to, they could have done, you know, seven and whatever. You know what I'm saying?
But then would that have magically made it compliant within the, to have the alternative plan?
It would have, it would have resulted in staff saying, okay, so the, so the alternative deck is complying with the setbacks. It still would have needed a use permit, right?
Right, so then, then I guess, you know, maybe we should ask the owner if that's, that's, you know, works for him. And if it does, you know, the window, another problem. Did I take up Mimi's time? Okay, I don't know who has the, the window issue might be solvable by having obscure glass in the bottom perhaps, something like that. That's a possibility. And then you'd have the full window and the full light, but you wouldn't have the view out. You know, although it's hard to, I mean, it's probably more the view in. I mean, someone's standing there perhaps. Don't, they want to see that rather than, but it seems to me they can see that window exists now. It looks like to me. It doesn't, it exists now, it's just not as low. So the low part maybe could be obscure glass. Those are the comments I have really to try to solve these issues. Maybe it does have to be continued, but I think Mimi's, if the owner go for it and make a move the setback like that, that's, that's a good idea.
Can we, okay, Lynda, to clarify, if the setbacks were flipped, the alternate deck expansion would not require a variance?
That's correct.
Our action is allowing the combined setback. So it doesn't matter which side it's on, just in terms of
That's right.
The setback.
So
Just in terms of approval of the setback. We can approve it this way, or we could flip it in approval.
And staff reviews of the project that's presented to them. It's not our job to try to tell people how to present the, you know, the project. And so, but now we're in a situation where it looks like it would have been better for the architect to draw it a different way.
That would preclude the need to continue the meeting, to continue the project and come back another month and have him do a whole new set of drawings, should the owner agree.
So I feel comfortable enough with you guys putting a condition in that the, that the drawing that's submitted for the building permit, right? Reflect number three, but with the minimum and the combined setback flipped. And then staff will make sure that it's drawn that way when it goes to the building department. And then you've got a deck that's away from the neighbor, but it's still out of the minimum and out of the combined setbacks.
But this also assumes that the applicant and the applicant's architect aren't going to incur additional costs because we're now telling them they should move the deck over. And, and it would require the applicant's consent to continue this, correct? And resubmit?
Right. If you, so you can do, and you can do either way. You can continue it and direct them to bring back new drawings for you to look at, even though they have the site plan basically shown to you and they would just be switching the setbacks. But that's within your purview to do that. Or if you feel comfortable enough, you could approve it, subject to them submitting a building permit, showing the deck as depicted in drawing three on page 2.1, but with the minimum and combined setbacks, east and west flipped.
I would, if the commission were to pursue that, I would want concurrence from the owner before we went that way.
Definitely, definitely. Because if they, if they don't want to go that way, then it's better to just take action on the project as presented. And then whatever the decision is, there's still the appeal rights of the owner or the neighbors if they're dissatisfied.
Because I would want them and their architect to be comfortable with this if we're going to go that route in the REZO.
Absolutely, that would be required.
My, the other point here that was brought up was that window. And that window is going from three foot wide by four to 3.6, but it's in the same location. They're not moving the window. So the window is just being replaced with one that is two foot. So the window is just being replaced with one that is two foot lower. So, you know, my sense of that is, is the window's already there. I don't have concerns with the window being enlarged and lowered. I just wanted to make that clear as far as the concerns of the neighbor. So, you know, after we're through discussing, I would like to hear back from the owner.
Okay, and we still have some commissioner comments. My sense, and I will ask our commissioner, who is an architect, my sense is that it would not be a huge project and expense to have, to have the architect flip the setbacks on this same set of plans. Commissioner Kelly, do you have an opinion?
On that particular item, it's really difficult to say. We don't have framing plans here, I don't believe. It appears the scope of the work would be quite similar that rather than coming off a one edge, you're coming up the opposite edge. But it's difficult to tell from these particular plans and understanding the existing condition with regard to cost. I certainly wouldn't expect that it's something in the magnitude of double or something like that. But it's very difficult to make that ruling or opinion with what we have. I would like to make a couple of the comments. I have the fortune of live, I lived about six months of my life, two doors up from this project, just on the opposite side from the other folks that we heard from tonight. And this, this portion of Manor Hill is wonderful. It's got the opportunity to have the view of the valley and the town essentially as your fourth wall of every room, right? When you're in a room, you look out, you see the town, and that's your fourth wall. And so I admire both of the folks we heard from tonight for having a great place to be in the world. The thing that is at issue is the fourth wall of a bathroom and a shower in one case. And likely a nice social space that you could go out onto to have that, to be out in those trees and to have that environment all around you as you're out on your deck. It's in conflict, right? A social space and a shower adjacent to each other are in conflict. And it's unfortunate. I think that this is a case that I really wish that the applicant and your architect would have included your neighbor in at least a discussion to come up with a resolution. You know, ideally as an architect, this is an opportunity to make both places better. And that certainly didn't happen or doesn't appear to have happened in your process. So my comments are that I'm very familiar with the location and how social those decks can be because it does become part of your living space and it can be some of the best parts of your living space when you're on that hill. I hope that the applicant can be flexible in this case. I guess we'll see. Because I definitely would be in support of sliding the deck over. I think that the alternate deck scheme, because it's included in the package, happens to be a very nice transition for you hopefully to be able to, I think you said in your presentation that you actually even liked that scheme. And maybe that is a possibility. I hope, I hope that it's the case. What I notice on the plans is that in that alternate scheme, the leading edge of the new deck addition is essentially no farther north than the existing. So if you were out on the leading edge of that new deck and you looked straight east, you're no farther out or to the north than the existing deck, which I think is telling that it would be less of an imposition on the neighbor.
Thank you. I basically agree with Commissioner Kelly's comments. And then perhaps we'll ask the applicant to come up and let.
Commissioner Newton has her hand raised?
I have one question to the parcel to the west, which is unimproved. Is that a buildable parcel?
Did you do, did you know that at all? No. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't, you know, any vacant site is, is buildable. Correct me if I'm wrong, this is across the street from the one the people own? Yeah, so what, historically, this town hasn't merged properties across public roads. So I think that property probably stands alone. Is there a parking deck or anything on it? Oh, okay. Yeah, so what, what a lot, what some of the uphill sites did is they either purchased the lot below or they got easements from the neighbors that owned the lot below to put the parking in rather than excavating into the hill. So yes, that is, you know, potentially a buildable site.
I'll just note that on the plot plan that was included in the package, the proportions of the site appear to be buildable also, just as it owns its own lot.
However, there's nothing there. And someone who builds there would take into consideration the adjacent properties and the views and privacy issues and design something where the neighbors weren't looking into their bathroom or vice versa. In other words, we're looking at what's built right now. Those are the decisions we're making and not on what may or may not happen down the road on a parking lot.
Commissioner Newton has her hand raised?
Yes, Commissioner.
So, yeah, I would like to hear from the applicant as well, but I want to pose a couple of different questions. One, because of what Commissioner Kelly just said about, you know, the potential costs of moving the proposed deck to the west side of the property. And I think it's, you know, to some extent has something to do with the topography, like you're going to move the support structures over. And, you know, I don't know what's actually on the ground down there. And, and I was thinking, you know, when I originally was talking about this, I was thinking, you know, that little bump out, it looks like it's a four foot wide bump out that we're talking about. Where do you put that bump out? And if you just keep it at the same square footage, you know, I can imagine cutting it out with scissors and trying to move it from the eastern side of that deck all the way across to the western side of the deck or halfway across, so it was lined up with the center. And, and that, you know, in my mind, would also be an improvement upon where it is now. And, you know, so my recommendation to the applicant would be, if at all possible, to agree to the continuance and then for the applicant to work with their architect and others to figure out where optimally moving that deck would be as long as it was either, you know, centered with the center of the house in terms of where that square footage of bump out is located or west of that line. So you either center it at the center of the house or anywhere to the west of that point. And let the applicant come back with something that proposes it at least further to the west than where it currently is proposed. The other question I would have for the applicant is whether they would be open to Commissioner Green's suggestion about, I think you said obscure, but I'm thinking like opaque, non-transparent window in that study area on the top floor. So those would be my, my two questions, you know. Does it make more sense to continue this so that the applicant and their architect can figure out the appropriate proposal that will make, you know, us happy, the neighbors happy, and hopefully them happy? And then the question about the glass on the, on the window in the top floor. Thanks.
So as far as the window, I think perhaps, you know, the commission might want to consider if that's, you know, the majority feel that the window needs to be readdressed or we're just talking deck. And get some feedback from the rest of you on that.
And your sense is?
My sense is the window's there, they're lowering it. They're not moving the window, the existing window that's there. So I don't see an impact from the window versus the concern about the deck. And I'm not sure that looking at making it opaque at the lower portion of it provides a benefit to the homeowner.
Thank you.
I'll chime in with the lowering of the windowsill. Basically, the biggest impact I believe that we'll have is the sightlines from further back in the room, deeper into the room, right? So if you have a waist-high windowsill, you basically probably have to come up within three feet of the window to look down at the neighbors. Lowering the windowsill essentially gives that same opportunity from another 10 feet back or so. So that's, that's how we should be evaluating that windowsill. That's the impact I believe that it will have. I'm curious to understand, maybe that's the reason that the applicant wants to do that windowsill lowering is so that you can see down into the valley from further back into the, in the room, I assume. But it's the, it's the view angle that we should be thinking about.
Mimi, did you want to, or Commissioner Green, Commissioner Newton or Green, any final comment? Then I'll make my comment and we can bring the applicant up and ask the questions that have come up.
Yeah, I'm not wild about the window expansion. And so the allowing for the lower part to be opaque would be an improvement in my mind.
Okay, and Commissioner Green, you've already stated that you would prefer to have some opaqueness in the lower. And any final comment? Commissioner Green?
Yeah, just, just based on Commissioner Swift's comments, this idea of obscure window is of course not to necessarily benefit the owner, but to try to take into consideration the neighbor's, the neighbor's issue. And then, you know, further idea of looking down the valley would be great to look through that window and see what that view is and see how it might improve with the lengthening of the window. And the obscure obviously would not, would not help that view at all. So it's, it's an issue. And maybe only one that the, that the architect and applicant can solve with their neighbor perhaps. But, you know, that's, that's kind of the benefit of a continuance, I guess, is to give people a chance to take another look. I don't know how the applicant would feel about it, but kind of seems we need one at this point.
Okay, I think we've covered all our bases. I would like to say, in my opinion, I would not like a deck with that view into my private space. And I would prefer to have the deck shifted to the other side. I don't have a problem flipping the setbacks. That's not a major issue and it resolves some policy questions of not requiring a variance. And I'm also concerned about the depth of that window because, as Commissioner Kelly stated, it's one thing to walk up to a four-foot window and then have to, and sure, you can walk up to it and look down and probably still see the neighbor's bathroom from that angle of it because it's right in the furthermost corner of that property. And so to have the window, I agree with Commissioner Kelly, all the way to the floor, you would be able to sit eight feet back and have that same view. And with an expanded deck, you can just step right outside and take in the entire canyon. So I am also leaning towards the alternate deck expansion with some level of coverage of the window. I don't have a problem with the extension of the window. And so I guess it's time for us to ask the applicant to come back. You've heard we have a few questions for you. One being, would you prefer a continuance? Or would you prefer a denial of this? Or, I mean, it seems like we have three votes concerned about the deck and the window, which could lead to a denial. We haven't specifically said that. And then there is the cost and talking to your architect. Linda, is there an additional cost for?
Continuance?
A continuance versus coming back? There'd be another cost to come back with a new variance and more plans.
Yeah, if you took, if you took action denying this project, they would have to reapply and pay, pay new fees. But if you continue it, there's no new fees to come back.
And so it would save you money ultimately to do a continuance. Obviously, it would, you know, require another month. But it does seem that it could be a straightforward solution that your architect could come back to us quickly. What, what say you, sir?
Yeah, no, so I didn't want to speak out of turn while, while people were making their opinions heard. The, the window going down to the floor height was merely an interior design choice. It doesn't give me a better view onto the valley. It was, it was, it was interior design. So that, so we didn't have a cutoff line on the room because everything would be going down to the floor. And then you'd have this one window that would have a waist height cutoff. And just from an interior design perspective, having that cutoff, it kind of misshapes the room and I'm trying to open the place up. So it's not an issue to make that opaque or some kind of pattern on that because that, that's not a view, that was not to enable a view out onto the valley. So that, that can, I think that can be resolved as long as it looks like a continuous frame from the inside. It's going to have to be split at, I think at three foot, I think the building code says you've got to have a three foot frame there anyway, just for protection for people falling out or smashing through or whatever. So we could split it into two panes and have the bottom one be opaque in some way. There's a variety of opaque glass that we can, we can do for that. So I don't see that that's too difficult to resolve that. In terms of moving the desk, the deck over to the, the west, yeah, I mean, if, if it is a case of being able to switch the setbacks, then we can, I guess we can do a continuance and bring the plans back with, with it shifted over. I think that it was rightly pointed out that, I mean, and I could see this just from, from, from simple math, that the view from this alternate deck expansion version, the far corner doesn't, because of the corner of the house, it doesn't see any further. In fact, it sees less than the corner that currently exists. So I think shifting it all the way over to the left makes sense. And I appreciate some kind of leeway there just in case there are issues from a building perspective of moving it over if, if maybe it's adjustable. But actually, my preference would be to move it all the way over to the west, the west, yeah, sorry. So yeah, it sounds like continuance with a resubmital of these plans. And I would also like to just verify with 219 that, that, that works for those guys as well. And then, then I'm okay with that.
I'm wondering if, well, it depends. They may need, as Commissioner Kelly indicated, we don't know what the structure is supporting these decks and what might be needed. But if it's, if it's simply a matter. if it's, if it's simply a matter of redesignating the setback, that could be a, perhaps a red line on existing plans. I don't know. It's something that, that the architect could discuss with you and, and do it in the least expensive, the least cumbersome way for them.
May, may I speak?
Yes.
So if you look on page A seven-one, you'll see, so one of the reasons we're doing this for the deck is to bring it to code, because it's currently cantilevered.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so one of the driving factors for um, expanding um, for, for redoing the deck was because it's currently cantilevered, uh, which is not to code, and the decks are assisted onto the current cantilevers. Um, so if you'll look at um, image number seven, it shows that we, we're expecting to have to drill down four piers to put this deck up. So it does not matter or make a difference to the construction if we were to move it over to the west. Um, because we, we're just putting up the main, the main struts to, to support it. So I, either side. And then the braces will be the same in the middle.
Fairly comparable, you're thinking?
Is, is, is the sum of that, yeah.
Okay, so thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. It would make her very happy neighbors and you still have a beautiful deck. Uh, that would extend out in, in a very lovely way. In fact, it would give you, if you move it to the left, because there is a shorter deck up against the wall, and then there's the long horizontal deck, and then if you extend on that side, it would give you a much larger deck area on the left side than on the right. Uh, okay, thank you. Can we move this along with a motion?
So I guess my question is, if the applicant is comfortable with a continuance, would they be able to come back looking at schedules next, at our next meeting? I'm not sure what's on the agenda. Because I don't want to delay this beyond one more meeting for the applicant.
Do you have anyone that would, anybody that has to go on the next meeting?
I, I had, I had a second follow-on question.
You know?
Also, we have a second question before you respond.
Is uh, if the applicant, um, if the scheme that they will be submitting is actually documented here as the alternate scheme, does it need to be heard by the planning commission?
So that's what I was trying to explain, that I would be, I would think, we're, we're getting, starting to get kind of busy and we have a lot of projects. So when you ask that question, what's going to be on the next agenda, we don't even know what the, what the attorneys and the council's going to have scheduled for our meetings. It's really hard for us to answer that, that question a month ahead of time. So I would prefer, because this is, because they showed the drawing, if you were, if you felt comfortable enough to just approve it subject to the, the deck being built at, as shown in in number three on page, whatever it was, just subject to the app, the building permit showing the, the setbacks flipped. And then staff will look at it when they submit for the building permit, and we're going to have a deck shown that you approved and you had a plan, and it just moves a line, moves the lines on the paper. And there's no variance needed, because they just drew it in a different way that made it conform. Do you understand? It's, it's one of the reasons I, I have had, the entire time I've worked here, I've kind of had an issue with these combined setbacks, because it's really kind of a judgment call, and there's nothing in the code to tell you which side it has to be on. You know, is it the corner of the house that's closest? That's the side that gets the five-foot side? You know, I, there's, it's.
So uh, Then the other part of that would be that they would address, um, if the commission agreed, they would address um, some type of treatment or change in that one window that they were extending.
Yep, that would be an added condition.
And that would be another condition that they could then come back with when they applied for the building permit.
Right. And then staff, we, we look at the plans, the building department always gives them to us. We check them, we make sure it's there. Then it goes out to the plan checker and we check it a second time when it comes back before it's issued, so that no changes occur.
I like the ability to streamline the process for staff, because we understand how busy we all are these days. And also the applicant, it would reduce your cost and your time coming back. You could, what additional costs you have can be done just to make your building submittal. And so uh, I, I would actually prefer approving the project with those two conditions and uh, approving the alternate deck expansion, as staff said, with the revisions requested by the planning commission for the deck and the window to be incorporated. And, and Linda, those were the only two changes, right? Or uh,
Those were the two.
Additional conditions?
Those were the two things that I heard was, were the concerns of the neighbors. And so those were the two things you would have to modify in the resolution.
Okay.
To address those concerns.
Given that understanding, is someone willing to make a motion?
Commissioner Green did have his hand raised, and then Commissioner Newton raised your hand as well?
Commissioner Green?
Yeah, actually, I was just preparing some text here. Um, you know, assuming, you know, we get um, a, a quorum on this, on this point. Um, I think we could do that. I mean, it's pretty uh, straightforward is to make a motion to approve the plans with the the condition that only the drawing known as the alternative deck plan on, what was it, six-point-one page? Uh, no, A-two-point-one, um, be approved and that the um, building official and engineers uh, will have, you know, uh, idea, they have final approval of um, the redrawing of those plans. Um, including that the architect will reposition the um, setback lines drawn on the current plan to eliminate a, a setback variance on uh, the new plans. Um, and you know, again, the building official will approve it. So I was working on language for that. Um, there's another thing, though, on the reso that Mimi brought up, uh, Commissioner Newton brought up, that is um, I, I was working on some language about that, too, this whereas problem. Um, you know, we don't want to go saying whereas something that, that we don't agree with. So uh, alternative language there would be um, that the proposed remodeling project was granted an exception that appears to have allowed the original building height to exceed the maximum allowed by ordinance. This is a one-time exception that has been carried forward. Language to that effect, or the same. Um, instead of saying complies with all the underlying zoning standards such as setbacks, height and size and height. So this would address that height issue.
Alternatively, Commissioner Green, maybe we don't need to clarify that language. Maybe we can, this project has been grandfathered in, as is given the historical approvals that have been granted over the decades. If you would like to remove the language that it complies with everything, we can just eliminate that. And I don't think we need to clarify that further.
So, and I think, at least what I was reading, it said, it said the project complies with the height. Um, not, not that the house itself complies with the height limit. Um, so, you know, they're not, the new portions of the house are not exceeding the height limit. And I don't, I don't think you need to go back now and address a house that's existed for this many years, that's, the part that goes over the height is not being changed.
It's the precedent issue I'm concerned about, and the neighbors raised it also, even. So that was the only reason for it really, is, is a precedent issue. And so, right, between you and a judge and a jury, we might, we might come out with something.
Well, but the, but the precedent's already there and has been for many, many, many years. I don't know that you can correct it at this point anyway. You know what I'm saying? So it was built, it was built.
Trying to do is sort of limit this precedent to this project. That's kind of my main thrust here. Also. And it was addressing Mimi's issue. But you know what? It's, it's fine. We don't, we can, we, if we can eliminate the language, the proposed remodeling project complies, da-da-da, the height, fine, that, that works also.
So um, may I make a motion?
Please do.
You know, I want to do one other clarification at the beginning of the resolution, where we, in the very first whereas clause, we talked about raising a section of the roof to add clear story windows. I would like to say AKA Clara story windows, which is a very nitpicky little thing, but I had gone and looked up clear story, because I think I've always seen it as Clara story. So just uh, in the first whereas clause, I would add that. Um, and I appreciate Commissioner Green's attempt to address what I had referenced about the underlying height requirement, but I also hear what uh, Planner Neil is saying about the um, the sentence actually referring to the proposed remodeling project as opposed to the existing structure. So I would uh, say we could uh, delete that middle sentence, or most of that middle sentence, we could say the proposed remodeling project will not encroach any further into the required individual side setback, combined side setback in the existing building.
Commissioner Newton, I'm sorry, can you reference what paragraph that is?
It's conditional use permit findings, paragraph one. On page one of the resolution.
Thank you.
And then uh, I would also propose that uh, we um, require the setbacks to be uh, switched. So the five-foot setback is on the west, and the fifteen-foot setback is on the east side of the parcel. And that the revised uh, plan be approved prior to the building permit being issued. And I would, yes, I'd add that as a new condition thirteen uh, before the now therefore be it resolved, just to avoid having to renumber anything. Um, but I would also propose that we give uh, the planning department the discretion to approve uh, the proposal uh, with the middle of the deck being aligned with the middle of the house, or further over so that the western side of the expansion is on the western side of the existing deck. So they would have a little bit of leeway. You don't have, they wouldn't be on the, the, have to do it like drawing number three, but they could do anywhere from centering in all the way over and let the building department approve that, so that they have a little, oh, actually, they don't need that, do they? Because they said they, that it's not going to change any of the struts or foundations for those decking, right? Because of the.
And actually, Mimi, we have alternate number three on the deck that we are referring to with the plans, which would preclude them from having to redraft the plans.
Yeah, okay. So um, I, you know, I would like to give them a little bit of wiggle room, but uh, I, I get, I gather that that does not seem to be necessary, given what we heard from the applicant and, you know. So, so to summarize, I would move to approve resolution number twenty-two-two-dash-twelve of the Fairfax Planning Commission, approving application number twenty-two-dash-oh-eight for a conditional use permit to add a bathroom, raise a portion of the roof to add clear story windows and expanded deck at the residence at two-seventeen Scenic Road with the changes that I just went over.
I'll second.
Okay. I will call a roll. All right. Um, Green?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Chair Fragoso?
Aye.
Motion passes. Well, thank you. Thank you, thank you. We worked, we worked that one. Uh, I'm sorry for the changes, but uh, the motion passes. This is, I think, the most expeditious way for you to move forward. And there is no appeal process, is there, on a continuance?
No, you, you just, you just approved it. Yes, there is an appeal, right.
So someone could appeal.
Right.
Uh, but there is a six-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee, I believe, with the city clerk to do an appeal. And I'm hoping that the uh, the neighbors, the next-door neighbors who are here are, are feeling good about this decision and the changes. Um, yes, we included the window, the lower portion with, we leave it up to the architect to come up with something. But they will be allowed to have the deeper window with some kind of screening below.
Are we taking a break?
A five-minute break. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to one-thirty-six, Tamil Pius Road. A garage and storage, storage addition. Uh, hill area residential development, tree removal, encroachment and excavation permits. Front yard and minimum side and combined side yard setback variances. Can we have the staff report, please?
Okay, so the project encompasses construction of a four-hundred-and-thirteen-square-foot two-car garage with a second-story one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-square-foot loft addition to an existing one-thousand-one-hundred-and-four, forty-two-square-foot two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bathroom residence. Site has one parking space now along the frontage that's located almost entirely within the Tamil Pius Road right-of-way. So this, this project will be bringing the property more into compliance with the current code requirements, which is actually for three parking spaces. Um, but because of the slope, it's going to, it's difficult for them to get three in, so. Uh, so the town engineer has reviewed uh, soils report, hydrology report. Um, the drainage, there was a slide on this property a number of years ago, and so there is an underground drainage system for uh, the runoff that collects the water and takes it down the hill through where this garage is proposed. Then it branches in the driveway with part of the water going um, under the neighbor's driveway and being dumped into the swale that runs on the north side of Tamil Pius Road, and the other goes into a um, drain inlet on the other side of the driveway. And they're proposing to uh, relocate the bottom portion of that drainage swale, so that it will run along the side of the garage underneath the access stairway. Um, and the town engineer has reviewed that plan and is supportive of it. The project will require the excavation of over a hundred cubic yards of soil, but um, the town engineer has looked at the way they're going to do that, and, and it, it will not create any kind, it will not undermine the neighbor's property or create any uh, instability problems for the hillside behind the house or the uh, project. So that's good. The project requires the approval of a side yard setback variance, an encroachment permit. side yard setback variance, an encroachment permit and a HRD permit. The, uh, because of the orientation of the house, the garage is going to be, is proposed, uh, to maintain only a one inch setback on the one side of the, of the property. Um, so the combined setback is going to be one inch also. It's going to be built up to the front property line at one point. Um, the HRD ordinance says that there, that any project in the hillsides in these landslide prone areas is supposed to minimize excavation as much as possible. And the location of the garage is pretty much the only place to put it. Uh, it minimizes disturbance to the, you know, the, the hillside and to the drainage. So we're supportive of the project. The, the applicant is proposing to have wood siding. And, um, let's see, the commission, you have the, the color and material board up there. If you want to take a look at it, um, it's also in the, it was in, it's in the public packet out front. If anyone needs to take a look. The added square footage results in a house that's similar in size to other homes in the neighborhood. It doesn't make it out of character. And so we are, we are able to make the findings for the design review criteria. Uh, will require the removal of three trees, a live oak and two bays. The, the Fairfax Tree Committee reviewed the tree removal application and have recommended that the commission grant, grant the requested removals with no special conditions. So they did not require replacement trees to be planted. Uh, there was an error in the staff report regarding the lighting. I had said that there was only one exterior light proposed on the front of the garage. And it was pointed out to me by one of the commissioners that there actually are two lights proposed on the back of the garage, lighting the doors to the, um, the storage area, but those won't be visible from the street. And I don't believe that the house up above is so far up the hill, they're not going to be able to see those either. Um, so we are recommending that you approve this project by adopting resolution 20 dash, 20, 2022-13. And I, um, I did have, is this the one? Yeah, so I prepare, I, there were a number of errors and omissions in the staff, in the resolution, which I'm going to read out now just to get them into the record. I, I sent out a redlined reso before the meeting to the planning commission, but we didn't have enough time for, to get it in the packet. They're pretty minor. So on page one, the first, the, the second whereas, where we added some words, so it reads, whereas the commission held a duly noticed public hearing on the proposed project on May 26, 2022, on the project plans and that's that for that page, we did some minor typo changes. On page three, first paragraph should read the portion of the garage, and then in parentheses, one wing wall of the retaining wall that projects into the Tamalpais right of way will not use or obstruct any developed section of the road and the area is not currently being used for the public. So that's the part that's encroaching, that they're requesting the encroachment permit for is just for one wing wall of the garage. And it's not in an area where people walk. It's not being used by the public. And on page five, I switched eight and nine, conditions eight and nine, and I took out the redundant wording. So, um, eight reads, all retaining walls that are visible from the street and are constructed of concrete shall be heavily textured or colorized in a manner approved by the planning staff prior to issuance of the building permit. This condition is intended to mitigate the visual impact of the proposed walls. And then nine will read, prior to the removal of any trees not approved by the planning commission through tonight's action, the applicant shall secure a tree cutting permit if required from the Fairfax Tree Committee. And that, that, I didn't change anything else in that. I just switched, I flipped them and removed the, the redundant language from the number eight. And then we added, we added the, the standard conditions of, from the tree committee recommendation, which say, state, it's number 10. The approved tree permit must be kept on the job site and the applicant must verify that the tree company performing the approved tree work has a current Fairfax business license. Which I guess I never really read our tree permit before because it's the first time I actually noticed those conditions. Now I know they're there. And then on page six, we added the condition, uh, I forgot to say in verbally in the staff report that this, this project site is within a quarter mile of a, a known northern spotted owl nesting site. So we added condition 15 that says, construction shall be prohibited during the northern spotted owl nesting season from February 1st through July 31st, unless a plan for allowing construction activities during this period is submitted by a qualified spotted owl biologist and approved by the state with documentation of the approval provided to the town prior to initiating any construction activities. All requirements listed in the plan, including potential onsite monitoring, must always be met by the applicants. And I just want to say that we actually have had someone successfully get approval from the state. So I only say that because, um, you know, the conditions to maintain the health of the northern spotted owl, they're kind of loosening up a little bit. We're realizing they're not quite as fragile as we originally thought. And the state agrees. And then on page eight, number 25 should read, the project requires installation of a fire sprinkler system in the garage structure. So the fire department is not requiring the entire house to have a sprinkler, just the garage. I don't know why that happens because I'm look, oh, are you looking at the redlined one or the? Okay, okay, so that's what happened. I think that might be it. Nope. Oh, yes. On page 10, uh, the language for the next item got kept in about a second driveway. So we removed that. There's no second driveway proposed on this project. So. And then under, on page 13, after the now therefore be it resolved, we wanted to read the approval of the Hill Area Residential Development Design Review, Excavation and Tree Removal Permits and a Minimum Side Yard and Combined Side Yard Setback Variance to allow construction of a garage storage structure in the required side yard setbacks are approved and the findings have been made to grant the requested discretionary permits. We, there are just some clarifications and then the, uh, northern spotted owl condition and yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, my, my reminder back there in the closet. This was an excellent staff report, Linda. It was, it was complex, given the drainage and the engineering's analysis. And also it was an exceptionally fine report by DAC uh, with, uh, beautiful detail that I see you have mostly incorporated into the, uh, into the resolution, uh, if not, specifically the comments, uh, by reference to the DAC report. So thank you for that. And before we go to the applicant, any, any questions or clarification questions to staff from commissioners? Commissioner Newton, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Fragoso. Um, Linda, when you made the change on, uh, after the now therefore be it resolved paragraph and you added the end, the, um, clarification regarding excavation, tree removal permits and minimum side yard and combined side yard setback variants. Should you have had encroachment in there? Cause that's in the title.
Definitely, thank you. See, I'm losing it. Yeah. Yep, thank you.
And should it also, in the title, it also says minimum front yard, minimum side yard.
Yep, thank you.
Combined side yard setback variants.
Yes, the title should always match the, after the now therefore be it resolved.
Okay. I think there were a couple of other changes that you skipped over that you made in the red line, but when we get there, I'll, uh, I'll fill some of that in.
I tried to call out the ones that were substantive and not the ones that were just kind of clerical issues. But if you felt I'd missed one that should be read into the record, that's.
Well, no, I think a lot of them are clerical, but I want to make sure when we get around to approving it, we cross our Ts and dot our R's.
Sounds good.
Okay, good. No other, uh, questions from commissioners? Then we will ask the applicant to come forward and make a presentation, the applicant or your architect. Architect Laura Kirland, our former planning commissioner, nice to see you.
Yes, nice to see everyone. So basically, we just here to ask, answer any questions. Um, Linda did a straightforward, um, staff report. You know, we worked through all the, you know, engineering drainage issues. We have a really good team in place, make sure that, um, we're doing what we do on a sensitive site like this. Um, we feel, I mean, the, the homeowner's just trying to clean up some, you know, irregularities with the, on the property. And I also, you know, the retaining walls of the garage are actually going to help protect the property as well. So, um, and I don't know, Linda, you may have had these as part of your, but I, I found some other errors. I just wanted to make sure that they're taken care of. The, in the reso. And I think they were, they, I noticed some other ones besides the list that I sent you.
Oh, did you send it, what time did you send?
Uh, no, I sent it yesterday, but.
Oh, boy.
But I think we, I, okay, so 49, you said there was no second driveway. Number 50, there's, we, we discussed, there's no sidewalk that's required.
I might've missed that one when I was reading too. No, and, and there's no, there's nowhere to really put one. That, that was another one that in my, in my lack of time and trying to save myself time, I used, I took the reso from the item after this. And sometimes when I'm really have too much work, I miss these things, so.
I'm going to use the, the numbers that I have there, which might be different than what you have, but I'll try to describe it as well. Okay. So number 55 references, um, a different consultant, um, civil engineer. We used Obercamper as, um, instead of ILS. But I don't know if you, if you need to be specific, but it's, it's, um, so there was that one. And then I don't think numbers 57, 58 or 59 are applied to this project. So I just wanted to confirm that. 58 references, um, a MAP foundation, which we're not proposing. And 59 seems like it's would be in a project that's in a flood area, which we're not.
Drainage issues here, so that does not apply, number 59, so is reported.
Well, I just wanted, I just wanted to verify because it seemed like it would maybe.
No, let me, let me explain, let me explain that, what that is. So anytime we have a drainage system that's going to require maintenance by an owner and, and we know that these owners are going to know where those improvements are, but we require that they record it so that when they sell the property or someone else takes over it, they know that they do have to sometimes, I mean, the system could fill up with soil or anything could happen. They need to know where it is.
Right, right, but there's another, I'm talking about the one that's before that. It's, it's, you know, a soils report that isn't our soils report.
Yeah, so you're, so I'm saying that we would, I agree that we would remove 57 and 58.
Okay, but you have number 60, you do have a drainage system maintenance agreement.
Oh, I see, so it's there twice, is that what you're saying? Oh, now I'm looking at the wrong one again. Yeah, so I'm getting confused because I'm looking at two different ones. Yeah, so I'm fine with, so you should make a note, I'm fine with removing 57, 58 and 59, but 60 has to remain under miscellaneous.
So if anyone has any questions or comments, we're available.
I have a question about what Linda is saying because the red line has a paragraph 57 that starts the soils report section 5.3.3. Is that the 57 you're talking about taking out?
Yes.
And then the 58 begins soils report section 5.4 retaining walls.
Yes, that should come out too, that, that's left over from the.
59.
Yes, in yours, it's 59. That's the one that has to remain in the revised version. And in Laura's, it's 60, right?
Okay, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Maintenance agreement has to stay in there.
Two paragraphs that you're removing, right? It's not.
I also have the one that says the native topsoil at the top.
So that's.
Cause that's, um, I think, um, for a different.
Paragraph 56, Linda, is that coming in? The, it's, so this is before the one that starts the soils report section 5.3.3.
Yeah, so in the original one, that's 56.
But right now, we've got a paragraph that starts the native topsoil at the top of any cut, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, so, so in, in, in all of, in both versions, the original and the red line, 56, 57 and 58 are going to come out. And, and 59 in the original, which seems to be somehow in my, I don't know, got mixed with 58. So it's going to jump from 55, which says it starts, the design shall allow a soil inclination throughout the project of, does that one apply to your project? Now, now I'm feeling unconfident, is that a word?
Well, yeah, I, I didn't bring the, I didn't reference it with the soils report. But I mean, you're, the town engineer that is going to be reviewing all of the drawings to make sure everything is in performance with their original recommendations. Anyway, so, um.
What are the date of the Obercamper report drainage plan and the first paragraph under town engineer?
I think maybe the way to handle this is just to, hang on. To, because we don't want to waste everybody's time.
Attach.
No, I think.
The deck report.
I think it would be simpler to make sure that the first paragraph, um, on the one after, when you first start to do your conditions, right? Laura, is that, is that correct? Do we list all the right, all the right reports and stuff and the right architects' names and Obercamper, yeah, we have it all correct in this number one, so.
Very beginning of the, um, before all of the different itemized conditions are listed, you do have the correct, um, reports and, um, and drawings listed.
Yeah, so on page four, those are correct. You guys, if you look at page four, when it says, whereas the commission has approved the project subject to the applicant's compliance with the following conditions, and you say the project is approved based on the following plans and. And you say the project is approved based on the following plans and reports. I think you could just add, and the applicant's compliance with all the recommendations in the following plans and reports, right? And then we'll cover any error or extra conditions I might have accidentally left in there.
Can you repeat that?
You already have to do this anyway. You've presented these reports from, from the engineers and everything, and they have recommendations in those reports. So they're just adding language in the resolution that, that states that. Yes, and we're just adding language above the list of those organizations, making sure it's, that it's very clear that all the conditions in those reports that are recommendations of your engineers have to be complied with. Yeah.
Can you repeat that?
Okay, go ahead, Mimi.
This, the project is approved based on the work being performed in accordance with the conditions and recommendations set forth in the following plans and reports.
In accordance with the conditions, Mimi, is that what you said?
In accordance with the conditions and recommendations set forth in the following plans and reports. The project is approved based on the work being performed in accordance with the conditions and recommendations set forth in the following plans and reports. And is the engineering plans referred to on the end of that list?
Yes.
Is that where the drainage in that is?
In your plan set.
Right, okay. The one from paragraph fifty-four that the So it says, the town engineer shall review the final stamped and signed project civil and structural plans. And the project civil engineer shall provide a letter certifying that the site grading and drainage improvements have been installed per the site drainage plan. So just was hoping that that could be clarified.
So that, that's referring to when it's being constructed. We asked the project engineers, you know, our engineer goes out and checks it before it gets buried, you know, to make sure it was actually done the way the plan showed it. But they, we also asked their engineer to send a stamped letter to us verifying that it was built the way he designed it.
Yes, and I love that language.
Double checks and, you know.
So I guess my question is the date there. Because this one says, it's the engineering plans by Oberkamper and Associates, received seven one twenty-one. All right, thank you.
Chair Green has his hand raised, and we do have a member of the public waiting for public comment.
Okay, Commissioner Green.
Yeah, okay, back, back where we get to at the end of the red line reso, where we get to miscellaneous. And I have it like number sixty is the, a drainage system maintenance agreement, including a system location plan. That's sixty.
No, in the red line version sixty is about, is your standard condition about exterior lighting being dark sky compliant.
Okay, so is that fifty-six?
I think you might be referencing fifty-nine. On the drainage system maintenance agreement.
Well, you know what I think happened is, as I crossed out these others, the numbering changed. Okay, so then, then the next one, all exterior fixtures, that paragraph dark sky compliant, that remains.
Yes.
And that paragraph looks like it's broken up perhaps, the fixture at the bottom of it, the fixture to be mounted on the garage front. There's no number there, right, in between those?
So the sixty is formatted really weirdly in the version that I'm looking at, Phil. And just kind of instead of being at the top of the paragraph, just pops up on the version that you and I are looking at in the middle of the paragraph. It's weird, but that's.
The next paragraph though, that starts, all the exterior fixtures must be dark sky compliant. And then has a sentence near, at the end of it says, the fixture to be mounted on the garage front wall must be reviewed. There's a paragraph number between those two lines. The fixture mount to be mounted on, there's a paragraph number. And then the garage front wall. So I'm assuming that's just a contiguous paragraph, right?
It is a contiguous paragraph. What, what program are you? So I don't know why that's happening because it's not.
We're both looking at this in Word, and it's just a weird product of some formatting.
Anyway, no, no matter. I just wanted to clarify that point as well.
Well, that's, that's kind of a lesson to me that.
Well, I think it's an issue between looking at the red line and all the changes in the red line versus bringing it up and looking at it as a final. So you can see what all the red line changes will look like in the final product. So in the final, it's all one paragraph.
Right, when you accept all the changes, it's going.
Yeah.
So Linda, I received an email saying this is the red line, but it wasn't redlined.
But you're looking, you're looking, see, everyone's looking at them in different, like, different, I can't even talk. You know, people are looking at them on laptops and their phones and I can't control, so I'm, I'm not sure. It's going to be better if we start meeting in person because I can physically bring you, so you're all looking at the same version. But when we're in the state where we're in a hybrid, I, I don't know how to solve this. And you have a staff person that has a lot of work. And I, I, for some reason, I'm unable to be perfect, and I can't get these things right the first time, right? So I'm not quite sure how to address that problem.
You are practically perfect.
I believe I could be perfect if I wasn't interrupted all day long with phone mess, phone questions and people coming to the counter and email questions, right? If I was working undisturbed, I bet I could be perfect.
How about we?
I thought we just covered everything, didn't we?
No, I was saying.
Oh, I mean, in the reso. No?
No, there'll be probably more at the end.
How about we leave the reso to the end and we move on with the public hearing on the project? We've had, did the applicant want to say any, anything other than what your architect? You don't have to, but if there is something you want to say?
Yes, oh, there you go. Okay, Robin Ebbensky, owner and applicant for the one thirty-six Towne Pius Garage. Pretty straightforward. Want to create a parking space, kind of clean up some legacy easements and encroachments and water and, and just provide a better space for garbage and walkways. And I think this will be just an improvement in general on the property itself. It's kind of funny that you're, you're calling it a storage, but it's nice to have it as a, it kind of creates the walkway. And we're trying to create something that would complement the current house that's there and be in that style. So it's pretty straightforward. We spent a lot of time trying to work with the complexities of the site. Obviously, the slide, the drainage easements, the civil. The engineer, this has been four years in the making to get to this point today, obviously. And a long way to go, but would like to see it built. So appreciate your efforts and the staff. So, and the architect and all the people that are listed in the resolution. So I'll let for public comment. Thanks.
Thank you. You do have an excellent team working on your project.
Well, for, it's good for the price we pay.
Some of the finest reports I've seen. Thank you. If there are no further questions from the commissioners for the applicants, can we see if there is anyone else from the public? Who has a comment? No one here, apparently. Tamela, anyone that you can see out there?
We do have someone online who would like to comment. Kristen, you can talk now. Please do unmute yourself.
Great, thank you so much. My name is Kristen Amlee. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so together with my husband Jason, I live at one thirty-two Towne Pius Road. And we love living here in Fairfax with the spacer at our house and the views and the trees and the hillside and all the great people. We live directly next door to one thirty-six Towne Pius Road on the downside of the hill. The drainage from both sides of the driveway on one thirty-six Towne Pius currently drains directly underneath our driveway. And it's great that there are, that the neighbors are looking into ways to improve that. However, this planning commission meeting is the first I have heard any details about this project. We have not been communicated with about it at all. So we are quite new to this process, although it's been a great learning experience listening to all of you so far in this meeting. We don't know what the process is, and Jason and I need to have a better understanding. This includes how to exercise our rights based on the impacts about what this may do to our property as a neighbor. So before this project moves forward, Jason and I would like the opportunity to, opportunity to obtain and review more details about the plans. We would also like to be able to ask questions and ideally have an informed dialogue with the neighbor and a more informed discussion with this planning commission, should that be necessary. So to do so, what we'd specifically like to see is we'd like to get copies of the meeting notes, the reports and any related information, of which it sounds like there is a lot. Especially if this has been going on for four years. And that includes any of the edited information that we talked about today in terms of edits for the reports. We'd also like to see copies of the proposed plans for the project, including specifics about the drainage, the retaining wall and the requested variances, including the side yard setbacks. And we'd like to have time to review this material before any decisions are made so that we can see if there's any impact on our property during and or after the construction. So ideally, we'd also like to know more about this process, including how long this takes, how long we get to determine whether there are any impacts on us and what to do if there are. And because I don't know more about this project other than what I've heard during this meeting today, that's all I can say at this time. So I look forward to your comments and guidance on how to obtain all the requested information. And thank you for allowing me time to speak today.
Thank you for your comments. Was that the only speaker, Tamela?
We do have another hand up. The speaker is listed as county. Perhaps they can better identify themselves. And you please are unmuted. Please unmute yourself and go ahead.
Oh, hi, Linda County. I live across the street. I also only found out about it this week. It sounds like, you know, everyone's carefully looking into everything. I just would also just be interested in any impact it would have on, on my property as it is. It's really hard to get out of my car deck if two cars are parked there. And I just want to make sure, I, you know, I'm just interested also in, in just learning something more about this. And if there's any impact, perhaps it's an improvement, which is what I'm hoping for.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Were those, were those the only two, Tamela, that we have so far?
I see no other hands at this time.
I guess my question then for staff is is there not a notice that goes out to?
Yeah, we mailed neighbors. We mailed the notices out ten days ahead of time, as we're required to do by law.
Ten days ahead of this meeting? And it went to a three hundred foot radius, does it not? So every property owner or every tenant received one?
Yes. Well, I don't know whether they received it. I mean, I've been hearing stories about the mail that aren't very encouraging, so all I know is.
Well, we do have these two who say they've not seen anything.
That's right.
A question, a question for the applicants then, was there any type of discussion with your neighbors? Did you, were you contacted by any of these folks?
No, we obviously had a conversation starting this project four years ago. We, when they first moved in, there was some questions about the front stairs and an encroachment on that. And we've talked about cleaning up the parking space and the access to the house. Over time, obviously COVID, maybe it wasn't clear that we were still working on it. It's, like I said, it's been a very long project. We've put up story polls two weeks ago. I'm, you know, as required to do so. This is the first time my father lives in the house. And he's here tonight, and nobody reached out. We're all very available. This isn't, obviously, it's a, it's a tidy area. We want to build and would be very respectful of people coming in and out. And construction, you know, the construction process is really very specific in the resolution as I read it. From filming and video specifying how things are kind of delivered and how parking is going to be handled and all of the requirements. You know, clearly, we've, we, I think we had to give notice about removal of the trees. We were in front of planning commission, I don't know, a couple of years ago with regard to that. So the process has gone on. It hasn't been very long, quickly, but it has been going on. So I do live in San Francisco, but my father does reside in the house. And as I said, we sent out the notices, put up story polls. And I think the neighbors, this is a benefit. And working on the drainage, you know, obviously want to improve that. So I, I'm, I don't, you know, that's all I can comment on, just that we've tried to notify and keep everybody in the loop as much as possible, so.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I guess the one thing I, I will, I can respond to the two residents who called in.
Chair Fergoso, can you speak closer to the microphone?
Yes, of course. The one thing I can respond, and Linda, maybe you can more quickly identify the section where the staff report talks about the problem with the drainage and protection of properties, not only for this particular address, but also for the adjoining residents?
What I can, what I can say to the neighbors is that the project was designed by one engineer that put his stamp and his, you know, certification on the study that determined how the drainage was going to be modified. Then our town engineer reviewed the project, and his job is to make sure that that the drainage has been designed in a way that it will not impact the neighbors or the town road. So you've had two different engineers, one designed it. The town engineer reviewed it to make sure that the town isn't getting any liability for, from the way this private property owner has designed the drainage, right? Then Coasland, and it goes to Coasland, our outside plan checkers at the building permit stage. They have their own engineers that look at everything also. So it actually gets looked at by three different engineering firms.
And, and they are all required to certify and review at every step prior to taking any actions. Prior to certainly any excavations, any drainage work. And I can also, I can also state that the drainage on this site has been a problem that comes from further up the hill.
Right.
And, and, and funnels right through this property, right through the space between this property and the adjacent property. And the structural plans have taken all of that into consideration.
Yeah, now, now what we should clarify is that if there's already problems with drainage on neighboring properties that aren't caused, you know, Fairfax is a little unique for Marin County city because it doesn't have any formal drainage. city because it doesn't have any formal drainage system. You know, where my parents live in San Rafael, there are drainage systems that take the drainage from the hillsides. They put them in pipes and they take them down to where they hit the bay. Here, everything sheet, you know, sheet flows over the hillside. So if, if an owner now has runoff from Tamil Pious that come, you know, that sheet flows over the road and comes onto their property, that's not going to suddenly disappear. This project is not responsible for fixing existing problems. They're, they're only required to not make any kind of existing problems any worse, not increase the drainage that's coming off their site or the speed of the water. Right? And that's what their engineer designs for, and that's what our engineer checks. They look at calculations in a hundred-year storm, you know, how much water is going to be coming down the hill, how fast. So I just want to make sure that nobody thinks that if there's some kind of problem not caused by this property, that this project is somehow going to make that go away. So that's not the case.
That is an excellent point. And I'm sorry, the neighbors were not somehow not informed about the project since all the noticing requirements were met. And and as I previously stated, this is a truly excellent geotechnical report and recommendations that have been very explicitly included in the requirements of moving forward for this project. And as Linda stated, we do have aside from the consulting engineers, we have the city engineer, the city's own consulting engineers looking at every single step of the way and signing off on everything before it moves forward. So I guess that's all we can say about that at this time.
Well, and that the story polls went up and, you know, the story polls were up. So even if the mailed notice didn't get in, I mean, you'd think that that would have alerted someone to call or something. I didn't get any calls at town hall. Because they could have, we could have provided that, you know, we could have let them see things if they had notified.
Right, exactly. Staff is always available to make reports available. And, and I'm, I'm certain that the owners would have been very willing to have a discussion and share materials with the neighbors. That we should close the public hearing since we don't have any further comments. And
Chair, just for the record, the previous two speakers have raised their hands again. I just wanted to put that into the record.
What were you saying, Linda?
I was just saying, sometimes you do, but not typically.
Typically, no. What does, what is the, the sense of the commission on, on going back and accepting more comments?
I think we've heard from the public as to the comments that they have. And we've explained what the process has been. So.
Okay, I, I have the same, the same opinion that there is nothing further that we can clarify. Everyone is certainly, are these available online or they could come, they could request copies of some of these from?
Yeah, the reports, the reports have been online, you know, on the town website since Saturday.
So I, I would recommend that the two previous
And the plans are there too.
Go online, all the reports, all the plans are there. But I can assure you that there was extensive review and there will continue to be very close review of every step of this process. With that, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Commissioner Green has his hand raised.
Okay.
My initial take on this project was it's extremely complex for a garage. But as far as drainage, et cetera, it seems to be incredibly carefully thought out. And to me, it appears, no architect here though, that this will be a major improvement to not only this particular lot, but to the, to the entire neighborhood. That's my first take on it.
I, I would agree with you. However, there is an architect. Laura Kirland is here in the project.
I meant, I'm not one. That's all.
Other commissioner.
Like to jump in. As I told Commissioner Swift during the break, I have the weird opportunity tonight to say that I actually lived two doors away from this project for about five years of my life also. I, I lived at 142, just up the hill. And it was the little house that both of my children were born when we were there. And I remember this hill and walked past this house and drove past this house thousands of times, maybe. I, I was going to ask if the Saab was still there and whether the garage was actually for the Saab or not. And I, I, I remember the Saab fondly. The house is actually an asset to the street. It, the scale, proportion, the sighting of this existing house is truly one of the best houses on the street. From a neighbor's point of view and how it looks, it's really lovely. It really is. And when I heard that it was going to get an addition, I actually walked up the hill and, and took a look at the story polls and stood out there for a while. I always wonder if people are going to think I'm casing the joint when I stand around and just look. But I did. And I think the, this, the new massing is a graceful addition. I, I think that it's, it's well done. And now reviewing the packet and the, the drawings, et cetera, I believe the garage addition is well done. I wish the project didn't have to go sightline to sightline. My house, two doors up, did. This is a stretch of houses that were really packed in there when they were built so many years ago. And so that's just an unfortunate condition that exists to try to get parking on this site. I don't think there's another way to do it. It looks to me that, I agree with you, that the, all the geotechnical report, all the work that's done with regard to the water seems to be done very well. Anything on this hill that can help with water management is an asset to the hill. We used to, every fall, we'd go and literally shovel out the, the gutter all the way down Tamil Pious. The neighbors would do that, knowing that this road has a problem with rainwater. So just managing even one site is going to be better for the street. So in general, I'd say I'm, I'm very in favor of the project.
I would like to add to that, if I can, that the the engineering analysis, the hydraulic analysis made certain that all the drainage, the water, the runoff from the site, that there is no runoff onto the street or adjacent properties. And so that was very specifically structured in, in that way. Any other commissioner comment? Commissioner Newton?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm still struggling with the Oberkamper reference. And maybe somebody could tell me where the, in the packet, the engineering plans by Oberkamper and Associates received July 1 are located. July 1, 21. And I apologize for being so dense about this.
So there are pages. C1.
C.
I might have put the wrong date on them, but it's, they're in your plan set as sheet C1 through C4 at the end, after the architectural plans. Now, we, I'm hoping that everything got scanned. We get reduced sets of plans from the applicants, which we then scan and post to the website. And the, the commissioners that are zooming in don't have these big sets. You know, they're trying to look at the sets that were posted online. Are you not finding them?
No, I thought, okay, no, that's helpful. Thank you. So it's after the tree committee
Right.
Report. On the PDF file, it's page 44 is C1. And page 45 is.
There are four C pages.
So I don't have four C pages. I have a C1, which is on page 44 of 46 PDF file called Item 2 Attachments B through E. Right?
I'm saying C1, 2, 3, and 4 on Item 2 Plans PDF. I see that. I don't see Oberkamper in them, but, oh yeah, I do. Yeah, there is, so there's C1, 2, 3, and 4, pages 7, 8, 9, and 10 of Item 2 Plans, I believe.
Okay, I, I don't know why I, the entire Item 2 Attachments B through E is a 46-page PDF file in what I'm looking at.
No, but there's another file called Attach, Item 2-Plans, period. That's just what it's called. And that's where these are.
All right. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm not hearing other, other comments from commissioners. I agree with Commissioner Kelly. I think that the garage is very well designed. It it's a tight fit. But I mean, if you look at what's there now, there's trash cans and cars and sandbags and a trailer and every, all the neighbors' trash cans are out there. And I don't know where you, your car is up on the, there's a car on the edge of the road here. I think this garage will be a huge improvement, not to mention the flooding that occurs right through what is essentially the only yard you have in your property. I think it will be a huge improvement, not only for your property, but for the entire neighborhood. And so basically, I'm extremely supportive of this project. And as I previously said, this is one of the finest combinations of engineering, structural and drainage reports that I have seen.
I'm supportive of this project as well. And I would have a few changes to the reso when we get there.
Ready to get there? Is there a a motion? Consider?
Chair Fregoso, I, I've been trying to keep notes of the various changes that we've been talking about with Linda and if Commissioner Swift was willing to go over the changes that she's recommending, I could potentially come up with a comprehensive set of modifications once I incorporated Commissioner Swift's.
That would be great. So let me give you mine. So the reso title that I have, the heading has an L in the, in the word resolution. When I printed out the final copy of the updated one, so I would delete that. Page 5, number 6, I would change to Ross Valley Fire Department from Ross Valley Fire Authority. And then page 12.
Hold on, Commissioner Swift, I gotta catch up to you here. Ross Valley. Looking for Ross Valley. That was on page 6, what paragraph?
Uh, page 5, number 6.
Oh, sorry. Ross Valley Fire Department, is what you said?
Yeah, from authority.
Okay.
And then my last one would be page 12, number 60. I would delete the last sentence, "The fixture to be mounted on the garage front wall must be reviewed and approved by the planning department before prior to submittal of the building permit." Because we're talking above that about dark sky complacency and submitting a lighting plan. So I'm assuming, and this is for the three lights, I'm assuming the lighting plan's going to have make and model of the light fixtures. So deleting that last sentence, which only refers to the the one light would be good. And those were the three changes that I had.
Okay, so I don't hear anybody else having recommended changes. So I'm gonna make a stab at a motion, if that's okay. Chair Fregoso?
Thank you, Mimi. Please do.
All right, so I move that we approve Resolution number 2022-13, approving Application number 22-09 for a hill area residential development design review, excavation, encroachment, and tree removal permits, and minimum front yard, minimum side yard, and combined side yard setback variances for the construction of a garage slash storage addition to 136 Tamil Pious Road. And that we do the following with respect to the red line that Linda sent us. We make sure the word resolution, that the title is spelled correctly. In the first whereas clause on page 1, it should read, "The town of Fairfax received an application from Robin Kubinski to construct a 413-square-foot-two-car garage," et cetera. In the second whereas clause, it should say, "Whereas the commission held a duly noticed public hearing on the proposed project on May 26, 2022." And in the next whereas clause, it should say, "Whereas after holding the public hearing, the planning commission determined that the project complies," blah, blah, blah. the planning commission determined that the project complies, blah, blah, blah." And then. On page 3. Uh, with respect to, uh, encroachment permit paragraph. The language should say, "The portion of the garage," parentheses, "one wing of the retaining wall," in parentheses, et cetera.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
"The portion of the garage," parentheses, "one wing of the retaining wall," end parentheses. These are all the red lines that Linda had put in, the version she sent us after me, and plus our additional changes. Um, on page, uh, 4. Uh, there is a, uh. Whereas clause under tree removal. And it says, "Whereas the commission has approved the project subject to the applicant's compliance with the following conditions," it should say, "After that, the project is approved based on the work being performed in accordance with the conditions and recommendations set forth in the following plans and reports." And then, uh, on page 5. The, uh, reference to the Ross Valley Fire Authority in paragraph 6 should be changed to Ross Valley Fire Department. The, uh, paragraphs that Linda switched should be switched. Such that, um. The. Paragraph. 8 and 9, I think, were the ones that she switched. And then paragraph 9 would say, "Prior to the removal of any trees not approved by the planning commission through tonight's action," et cetera. Um, and the new paragraph 10. Would read, "The approved tree permit must be kept on the job site, and the applicant must verify that the tree company performing the approved tree work has a current Fairfax business license." And then on page 7. The, uh. Addition of a paragraph indicating that "Construction shall be prohibited during the northern spotted owl nesting season from February 1st through July 31st unless a plan for allowing construction activities during this period is submitted by a qualified spotted owl biologist and approved by the state. With documentation of the approval provided to the town prior to initiating any construction activities, all requirements listed in the plan, including potential onsite monitoring, must always be met by the applicants." And. Renumbering all these paragraphs accordingly, based on adding that paragraph, new paragraph 15. And what would now be paragraph 25 is gonna say, this is on page 9 under Ross Valley Fire Department. Uh, the new paragraph 25 would say, "The project requires installation of a fire sprinkler system in the garage structure that complies with the National Fire, blah, blah, blah." And, uh, the next change would be on page 11. Where the paragraphs, old paragraphs 49 and 50 are deleted. Uh, referring to a second driveway and a sidewalk. And then again, we're gonna renumber all the subsequent paragraphs accordingly. Uh, in the paragraph that is now number 54, under Town Engineer, the first paragraph under Town Engineer. On page. 12. The reference should be to the Oberkamper. Report. Uh, which is received according to. Some of the other documentation on July 1st, 2021. I think that's how it's referred. Yeah, July 1st, 2021. Uh, instead of a reference to ILS. And Associates, and then the paragraphs, uh. That begin with the native topsoil at the top of any cot. Uh, which is 56. 57, the soils report section 5.3.3. And 58, the soils report section 5.4 retaining walls. All three of those paragraphs will be cut. From the proposal. Uh, and that'll take us down to a new paragraph under miscellaneous. Referring to a drainage system maintenance agreement, including a system location plan and required maintenance schedule shall be approved by the town engineer. Changing haul to shall. Um, in the following paragraph, which will be renumbered accordingly. Uh, and the reference in this paragraph is to all the exterior fixtures being dark sky compliant. The last sentence will be struck, the one that read, "The fixture to be mounted on the garage front wall must be reviewed and approved by the planning department prior to the building permit," will be struck. Uh, in the paragraph after, the now therefore be it resolved, and I'm still on page 13 here. Uh, there's a reference to the approval of the Hill Area Residential Development Design Review. And then we'll add excavation, encroachment, and tree removal permits. And a minimum front yard, minimum side yard, and combined side yard setback variance to allow construction of a garage storage structure, and et cetera. Uh, with those changes, I would move we approve that resolution.
I would second that.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Green?
Is that an I? We can't hear you.
I think you have to say it verbally.
Would not cooperate. That was great, Mimi. Yes, I.
Okay, Newton?
I.
Swift?
I.
Kelly?
I.
Chair Fregoso?
I. And, and also, Mimi, you have a remarkable way of pulling items together like that and, and clearly and quickly jotting them down. It's hard to even write as fast as you can talk, let alone put cogent thoughts together as you do. Thank you. The motion carries. There is obviously an appeal period. Uh, anyone who appeals would have to do so within 10 days uh, with our city clerk for a fee of $650. Uh, but your project is approved. Best of luck.
I so am.
Our next project, 152, oh no, that's the, uh, a, a, addendum. Uh, our next project, 152 Portius Avenue. Addition to single-family residence, Hill Area Residential Development Design Review, and tree removal permits, and a parking variance application, 22-10. May we have your staff report?
Okay, so this, this property has kind of been suffering from deferred maintenance for a while. And so, um, it's two, it's a main house that's basically one bedroom, one bathroom. It's very small. The project will add a two-story addition to the back that will, you know, it's still gonna be a very modest house, and, um, it complies with all the setback regulations, the height limits. Um, they're also going to be replacing the front retaining wall that's not in very good shape. But because of the amount of, because of the fact that it's in a landslide hazard zone and the property's substandard in size, it requires a Hill Area Residential Development Permit. What else do I need to tell you? Yeah, it's a 50% remodel and it's in a landslide hazard zone. But the town engineer has reviewed. Project plans, um, geotechnical reports, two different geotechnical reports. Uh, so one, one was the original report, our engineer commented, and then their engineer responded to the questions. Uh, they've reviewed the architectural plans, they've reviewed the survey. And also the engineering plan sheets. So, um, the water sheet flows now down, anyway. So there's, there's a drainage study, right, that goes into quite a lot of detail, and, um. Their engineer has determined, and the town engineer agrees, that the proposed work will not create any stability hazards for the site or for adjacent, uh, properties or for the public road, as long as certain conditions are met. And, um, we've included those conditions in the resolution. So the project will have to comply with those. The applicants, um, were, as part of their project, they were requesting a parking variance to, uh, park in the side yard setback. So they want to create a second driveway to the property, and they were going to park in the combined side yard setback in that driveway. Um, but what we, what I discovered when I routed it to the different agencies and departments is that the Public Works Department will not support parking spaces covering the, the public sidewalk. Even though the existing garage on this property and the existing driveway provide parking in that area. They're, they're, you know, one project at a time, trying to get sidewalks throughout town in areas where people walk. And so, um, originally, we were gonna support the parking variance, but then based on the Public Works Depart- Department's comments, we, um, are recommending that the project be redesigned. And that we think they have room to pu- put the parking parallel to that retaining wall that they're replacing. So the driveway, the second driveway has to go to the council for approval, but that second driveway, they can turn and put a parking space on their own private property and keep, keep the sidewalk open. I said, I-
You're saying the project doesn't have to be continued for a redesign?
No, 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 no. They already have a level area that they're, that they're putting, you know, pavers in. And so, I mean, people might end up parking there anyway. Will they, you know? Anyway, they, they can address it relatively easy. And when I, easily, and when I tried to, I said to the Public Works Department, I said, "But the, but the parking is already that way for the existing garage and driveway." And the response was, "They shouldn't be parking in their driveway. They should be parking in their garage." So they feel pretty strongly about this. Yeah, that's what the garage is for. So anyway. Uh, and, and the reason that, that the second driveway is the best way to get more parking on the site is because widening the driveway would result in the removal of one of the few trees that are at the frontage of the property, right? So it's, staff will be supporting the request for a second driveway to the town council. There are three, there are three trees that will have to be removed to facilitate the construction. Um, only one of them is, is large enough to be subject to the tree ordinance, and the Fairfax Tree Committee reviewed that tree removal request and recommended that the commission approve the tree removal project. Uh, the exterior colors and materials, uh, will, you know, result in a house that blends in with the surrounding hillside and the neighboring homes. And, um, it's gonna result in a house that's, that's very similar in size to the other homes around it. So it's not, it's in proportion with its site and in proportion with the other properties in the neighborhood. So we're, we can make the, we can find that the project complies with the design review criteria. And so the only issue that I just discovered today, thanks to one of the commissioners, is that the. The land, the land, the revised landscaping plan does not, does not match the approved vegetative management plan. And this is a problem that I alone created, because I said to the applicant, I felt kind of that the front was not, you know, it could be softened by some extra landscaping, you know? I said, "See what you can do." So they revised their landscaping plan to include a hedge that runs up, you know, um, peril, it runs parallel to the front stairway, and they put in a planter that's gonna run along a portion of that new retaining wall. And they proposed landscaping in the two dirt strips adjacent to the sidewalk. Okay? So when I reached out to the fire department, I was. Given a little lecture, because they will not allow plants that exceed four inches in height in that, in those planting beds on either side of the sidewalk. That's what I was told by two, two fire inspectors today. You can only have plants that, that are four inches or less in height. They will, they do not allow any, um, plants within four, four feet of any structure. So the thing that runs up along the stairway, the, the hedge, that can't be there. Okay? So anyway, when I thought about it, all, all that kind of leaves us with is the planter, which they could pull out of the five-foot set, you know, five feet away from the garage and the ADU. But based on what the fire departments told me, I believe that what you should do is just approve the project based on the original uh, vegetative management plan and not require them to do the landscaping plan. They can do that later if they want. They can go back to the fire department. If they want to do that, they're gonna have to submit another vegetative management to the plan, to the fire department, and it will just delay things. So I, um.
So Linda, is the vegetation plan they submitted separate from the plans we've reviewed? It came in later, or is it an integral?
No, you have the approved vegetative management plan in your plan set. And if you look at it, you're gonna see, because the Commissioner Swift noticed, the vegeta, the approved vegetative management plan by the fire department is different from the landscaping plan.
Is that VMP?
So if you look at page. Yep, mine on the right, I'm in the old.
So in the packet, there's, um. Vegetative management plan. That was approved by fire in January. And there's the cover letter from Ross Valley Fire attached to it. So that's the one that's, that was already approved by Ross Valley Fire. And then in your packet, on your plans, you've got another updated vegetative management plan that, uh.
Not approved by fire?
Correct.
Okay, so.
So Planner Neil is saying, ignore that and just go with. Oh, your mic. Sorry.
For most of you, it's a reduced set that came in later that we stapled to the front of your plans. It's page L1.
Oh, okay, that's it.
That's gonna go away, because.
That's good, because that was.
I should've just kept my mouth shut.
I have it as A101?
No, it should be L1.
The L1. L1.
Yep.
Got it. So L1.
And I apologize to the applicants.
Thank you again. So L1.
For that ludicrous suggestion that I made.
Is to be removed. Everything else in this.
Everything else is fine. Yep. By the way, what the fire department said is that, you know, once, once the project gets built, they rarely go back out unless they get complaints, you know? So it's not like you can't do some of this, you know? But they would, you know, unless you want to get in trouble, don't put any plants that grow over four inches in height in those two strips next to the sidewalk. Oh, I wasn't even done with my report. Sorry, you guys, I've been up for a long time. Anyway, so I am recommending that you approve this project. And I think I only had one thing to change in this reso. Did I? Boy.
Well, you're looking for that. I will just say that I do agree, this is a nice, nice project. It'll be a significant improvement for your property and for the neighborhood. And I'm, I'm very happy to, to see it.
Oh, yeah.
The one question I had, Linda, was it seemed to me when I went out, I went out there today to look at the site. I see clearly from the plans that the addition sits behind the existing house. And yet, the story poles seem to be off to the left side. And not directly behind it. The story poles seem to be off to the left. But this will be built as in the plans, a little to the left, but directly behind the, the main house, right? Okay, the pole just seemed a little bit off to me. But the plans are clear.
So I think what you were-
Well, what I was trying to add was spotted owl condition, which I- So anyway, that needs to be added to the resolution.
And should we get there, it might fit as after number 12?
Yeah, the same place the other one went in. I thought I printed out a-
There is an addendum for item three that is the, that is the spotted owl.
Excuse me, Commissioner Green, could you speak more directly into your mic? It's hard to understand what you're saying. Thank you.
There is an addendum, attachment that says, you know, has the spotted owl condition in it. We can either refer to that or actually write it into condition 13, I guess.
That was my intention, that that be added.
Are there any more clarifying questions for staff before we bring up the applicant? Why don't we just bring the applicant up and we can clarify afterwards? So we'll open the public hearing with the applicant's comments, please. You state your name and- To hit that red button.
Good evening, members of the committee. Thank you for taking the time to hear our application. Appreciate that. And I just want to say that we moved to Fairfax not long after COVID hit. Actually, it's been about two years, but we've really settled into the community. We've made a lot of friends and have found that the house, as Linda said, you know, has some, some neglected maintenance and we are happy to try to improve that to make it fit in more into the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, we've gotten to know our neighbors so much that, here Linda, here's some copies of- We have some signed affidavits from people who support the project. We've shown them, talked about what we're going to do and they are very much in favor of it. So we have the support of our neighbors at this point. So this is, this is an owner builder type project. And we've, we've tried to do this as expeditiously as possible and to do it with heinz, with improvements accordingly with fitting in with the neighbor, neighboring houses, keeping the design and appearance in line with the neighborhood. And I guess I'm open to any other questions. I did have one question to ask Commissioner Kelly, if you've lived on Portius at all before.
Two houses down?
Not, not yet.
Yes, why don't you stay up in case we have any questions? But thank you very much for bringing these, but not only for bringing them, but for talking to your neighbors. Because that can be, it can be a real problem for neighbors. As we noticed earlier, a couple of people were just not aware of some major and significant improvements. And so, you know, they felt bad about that. So this is wonderful. We're always very delighted to see this type of collaboration and discussion amongst the neighbors. Does the commission have questions of the applicant? And zooming over there with a question or a comment? I guess everybody likes the project. I like it. I think it'll be a wonderful improvement. And it seems like, again, you have some excellent reports and good architecture and the engineering work was clearly approved by our town engineers. And one oak unfortunately has to be removed, but there's, there's no way around that.
Commissioner Green has his hand raised.
Okay, Commissioner Green.
Yeah, on, in the, in the report, let's see what page this is. Page six, there's a section that talks about that the Public Works Department will not support the current parking configuration for significant remodels and the applicant can still propose a driveway approach accessing an additional parking space that will have to, to be parallel to the front wall. I thought, since the applicant's up there, I was wondering what he thought about that.
This is, I guess this is pretty recent news, isn't this, Linda? Yeah, today. So I don't have much to say right now. I'm still kind of processing it. But I do have members of my, my support committee here. Okay, could I have someone talk about this? This is Justin, actually. He's my brother-in-law.
My, my name is Justin. I am this brother-in-law. I'm actually the guy that will bang the nails. I laid out the site plan on this property. And when you measure from the curb to the sidewalk and then from the sidewalk to where the new retaining wall will go, one car will fit bumper to bumper. But to make it more feasible and you turn slightly to the left and it will not be an issue. And like Linda had stated earlier, with the pavers we're going to do with the vegetation and the grass going through them, most people would most likely turn and park there anyway. And that is sort of the intention because parking seems to be the biggest concern on that street. 100%. Because of fire, I guess. I, it's mainly, it's a major inconvenience. Like there's been one guy parked in front of the house now for two weeks. And it's just that kind of thing, you know? It's how do you get it in and out of your driveway? And if someone takes the other spot between Bob and Jan's, which is only this much space between two driveways, then you can't exit or enter your driveway.
Exactly.
It's a very nuisance.
It is a real, it is a real problem.
And as far as the garage goes and stating we should park in our garage, we are actually converting the garage back to a garage. That is the intention. The former owners had tried to put a living area down there and we are actually taking it back to a garage.
Oh, that's, that's great news. But it is a living area on the second floor of that garage? Okay, that's wonderful. But yes, using your garage will help out a lot.
Thank you guys much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to give a brief comment that the, the parking issue, that, that particular street, I, I do ride my bicycle along that street quite often and used to walk our kids along there and now ride with young kids along your street. The sidewalk or proposed, hopefully sidewalk is really important and, and to the entire community for safety and just to, as an amenity, as a sort of community amenity. I just want to point that out.
That's, that's a very good point. And, and the Deer Park neighborhood in particular, I, I live in Deer Park and there are no sidewalks or if they are, they're all broken and there's a piece of rock and a piece of brick and then dirt and then nothing. It's, it's very difficult to walk on. I have bad knees and ankles, so I find myself walking down the middle of the street a lot of the time, which is also a problem with the cars zooming by. And parking is one of the worst, one of, one of the worst problems. We had a fire up the hill. I'm, I'm on Mirna and Ivy, there was a fire up the hill a couple of years ago. And, you know, the fire engines and the fire trucks were trying to get up the hill, but all the cars were coming down the hill and circling around the hill, going up to see what was going on, blocking the fire engine. So it's a problem. If there are no further questions of the applicant, then we'll open the public hearing. If we have any-
There are no hands online.
None?
None.
Okay, that's good for you. In that case, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for any commissioner questions, comments, or could we have a motion?
So I support the project and I'm willing to make the motions since there aren't that many corrections to the reso. But I did want to make a comment that this isn't the first application that's come before us where the applicant was either asking to widen an existing driveway or to put in a second driveway. And the way our code reads, that variance has to go to the town council. And so I'll just repeat what I said the first time that that came before us. I think that that is something that, you know, puts another step for the applicant to have to go to the town council to get that approved. And that's something that I think, in most instances, something that the planning commission should be able to address. So I just wanted to state that both for the process that we do, that's, you know, hard enough for applicants to go through sometimes, that that's something down the road, hopefully we can look at and, and make that change. So with that comment, I will make a motion to approve, and of course, I don't have it right in front of me. Resolution 2022-14, a resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application number 22-10 for a Hill Area Residential Development Design Review and Tree Removal Permits and Combined Side Yard Setback Variances for the Expansion and Remodel of the Existing Residents at 152 Portius Avenue with a change of adding the spotted owl paragraph, and I believe I said that would fit which I can't find. After paragraph 12 on page six of the reso.
Also, the- The point about adopting the Ross Valley Fire Department and eliminating the, the vegetation plan that had been submitted, L1?
Well, I think we already, that was already approved within the packet. So I'm not sure that we have to add that to the, to the reso that we're going, correct? Mike?
All right. We didn't cite the landscaping plan anywhere in the resolution, did we? I'm just checking. Yeah, no, we didn't specifically call that out. So we're just going to, when, when they submit their plans, that landscaping plan better not be in there.
Oh, okay, so we didn't call it out in the reso, so we just pulled it from the plan?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was an app, so in the olden days, right? Before all this, these fires started happening, when we would look at a, like a, you know, a streetscape like that, it was all about trying to, you know, soften it and not make it look all, you know, man-made and concrete. I'm still having a hard time letting go of that, right? And so because the retaining wall was so tall, right? Even though I thought that they should make some kind of an effort to put in a little bit of landscaping and I was told by the fire department, "Ad, Linda, that is not a good idea."
Look, you know, we have, we have some very odd-looking decorations on walls like that around town, such as lizards crawling up the walls and other things. And we have a lot of different, they're very creative. I mean, it's sort of, you could do a tour of Fairfax, looking at the decorated walls and you can make a book out of it. It's, it's a really wonderful feature of the town and hopefully you can do something creative here.
Okay, but we do have a motion on the floor and I'm looking for a second on this motion.
I'll second.
Commissioner Kelly seconds, the first by Commissioner Swift. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Green?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Chair Fregoso?
Aye. The motion carries. You have your project. Congratulations. There is, as you know, a 10-day appeal period. Should someone get, be in their bonnet about it, they would apply to the town clerk a $650 fee for that, but your project is approved. Good luck. I think we're, we're all looking forward to seeing those improvements. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. We really appreciate it. I think a few minutes?
Planner Neil, are you waiting to bring in? All right, we can take a break while you're doing that.
Well, we're still, we're still live public on public Zoom. So our next item-
Recording in progress.
Thank you. I don't need a minute for Mimi. Hello, Janet. Thank you for joining us. We're just waiting for Mimi.
Can you put, can you ask Kylie Otto, we put, oh, there she is. Okay.
I'm sorry, I did try to promote Kylie and it was declined, but there she is now.
There she is. Thank you.
Okay, the gang's all here. Linda, are you doing the staff report or is our legal counsel going to do it?
I'm happy to do that.
Janet, are you doing the staff report or is Linda doing the staff report tonight? Or Kylie?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, good deal. Okay, good deal. Yes, no, I'll do it. This item is coming back to you from a continuance. It's the SB9, lot split, urban lot split sometimes referred to. And we have discussed this before at the commission. And as you know, this is something that is state law. That's, it's in effect right now, even if the council hadn't enacted it by urgency, but they did. And so that was in January or effective January 1 anyway. And so we are here tonight and what we're doing is a procedural adoption. We, we did it by urgency at the council, effective January 1. And so now we're coming back through with just a regular adoption. And it allows us to make some minor modifications to it. And we have in fact recommended one change to, from what was adopted by the council, effective in January. But we're here primarily to get the planning commission's recommendation for the council. And so we have had numerous discussions with several of the commissioners. And I believe there are going to be some requested changes. If there are any requested changes, we're happy to put those all together. And you don't have to reach consensus on them. We'll just put them together as a, as a group. We can attach names to it if you'd like, but we'll take that forward to the council and for their consideration, because where this goes after at least planning commission is back to the council for two readings in 30 days of regular ordinance adoption. And I have my partner Kylie Otto here with me tonight to answer any of the detailed questions. I think we have spoken with a number of the commissioners and answered questions, but we're happy to. If you have additional or further questions, we're happy to address those.
Okay, then. Do any commissioners have questions or a comment to legal counsel? Amy, I see. Are you going for your mic?
Yeah. Thank you so much, everybody, for all the hard work that's gone into this. I'm still interested in understanding a couple areas a little better. And I understand that what the state law does leaves us with some areas of continued control with respect to height restrictions, lot coverage, open space, architectural design, landscaping, fire hazard mitigation measures. The list that I kept is what we retain control over. And I'm also curious about where some of the sort of leanings with respect to some of those issues have come from, right? Like if, to the extent that we've been directed by the council to really lean in one direction versus another, I'd like to understand that in order to get my feedback, right, to the town council through you guys and whatever the recommendations of staff wind up being for the council. And so some of the issues that I'm interested in understanding more better, the occupancy certification and where the where the concept of requiring owner occupation of the premises for a period of time is derived. I'm also interested in understanding where the idea that we have to have matching architecture comes from, because in Fairfax, I thought we kind of honor the quirky and the different. And so that was sort of a question, why are we asking for these things to be matchy-matchy? And I'm also curious about the prohibition against short-term rentals. And it seems somewhat inconsistent with the other work we're doing on short-term rentals. So I just want to understand the relationship between those issues. Thanks.
Okay, how would you like to address the questions? Individually, wait for everybody to ask their questions and then try to answer them? Or what would be your pleasure? Individually?
Why don't we do it individually? Because we get two or three questions, we answer them, and that might preclude someone else from having to ask the same question. So let's, let's just run with it and see how that goes.
Okay, Kylie, can you help me with this?
Yes, so for the occupancy, the owner occupancy requirement, that comes directly from state law. As the duration of time, let me you know which section you're referring to by any chance? When you say duration of time? I apologize.
I'm sorry, are you asking me what time period I'm referring to?
Yes, and just so I can make sure I can tell you where it comes from, whether it's from, was created or it's directly from state law. So I was just trying to see which time period you're referring to.
Well, I think you just answered it. If the occupancy certification comes from the state law.
Yes. Okay. And then you also said the matching architecture, that was a recommendation by city staff to have that requirement in there to make it so it blended. That was not, that's not contained in state law. That was created by city staff. And did I miss any of your questions, Commissioner?
Prohibition, the prohibition against short-term rentals on the
Short-term rentals does, comes from state law as well, that we can do it. So that comes directly from state law as well.
That we can do it, not that we must do it, right? I'm trying to understand a little bit better.
It states that a local agency shall require that a rental of any unit created pursuant to this section be for a term longer than 30 days. So it doesn't prohibit rentals. It prohibits anything shorter than 30 days, and that is in state law.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
I don't have questions, but I have recommended changes. So if people want to go, if people have any questions first. Okay.
Well, are we going to listen to public comment before we get into debating changes? I, I don't know if other, we don't have other questions. Don't we have a hearing?
I forgot that we do have a public hearing.
Right.
But, but questions could also be clarifying questions. I don't know what your questions are about the law or
I'll wait until after public comment.
So there are no further questions from the commission? Then we'll go and open the public hearing if we have anyone still watching us at this later.
Yes, I think it might be worth reminding that you use the raise hand function if you'd like to speak right now. And now is the time for public comment. And I see no hands raised. Chair Fregoso.
Thank you, Tamela, for reminding people to do that. And since we don't have any public comments, any, any commissioner questions? I'm looking at Commissioner Green or Kelly. I don't see they have any questions.
Commissioner Green has his hand raised.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Green.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I'm ready to vote for the recommendation without any further questions. Just wanted to let you all know that. I, I don't see any reason really to discuss this anymore, but that's just me. You know, obviously other commissioners may have some recommendations for language changes, et cetera.
Okay, well, I think we may have a couple of comments and then we'll look to you for a motion.
Chair, Madam Chair? If I may?
Yes, please.
Would you close the public hearing, public comment period?
Did we not close it? I am now officially closing the public comment period.
Thank you.
So the recommended changes to the ordinance are in two areas. One is lighting. So, and this applies to both the urban lot splits and the two-unit projects. So and they're the same in both. So as it reads now, it says, and this is the top of page eight for urban lot splits and page 17, I believe, for the two-unit projects. It reads, "All exterior lighting shall be downward directed, shielded to prevent direct off-site illumination. The minimum number of fixtures necessary to provide pathway, stair/step and entry illumination and a maximum of two-foot candles lighting intensity. No landscape lighting is allowed." I'd recommend that we change that to "All the exterior lighting fixtures must be dark sky compliant, downward directed, fully shielded to prevent off-site illumination and emit no light above the horizontal plane with no sag or drop lenses, side light panels or uplight panels. And with a color temperature of no more than 3,000 Kelvin, no landscape lighting is allowed." And that's more in line with what we do in relation to our applications and kind of our standard dark sky requirements. And it's the first time I've seen the term foot candles used in any of our previous work. So that's one.
I'm sorry, can I, have you clarified? Did you also agree no landscape lighting? Or landscape lighting, you're saying is okay if it meets the dark sky?
No, I, I was fine with what was in the existing ordinance, which says no landscape lighting is allowed. And I think the intent there, when that was added to this was, because obviously path lighting is landscape lighting, right? But I think the intent was landscape lighting outside of your pathways and things like that. Like if you wanted to uplight trees and that type of thing, so.
Would that preclude, at my house, I have a deck all the way around my house and it's very dark at night and I have these little solar lights. I stick them in the ground. They give me a little light at night. I can see who's out there. I can walk around, not trip and fall into the creek. Would that be considered landscape lighting?
To my way of thinking, that would be, that would come under "necessary to provide pathway, stair, step and entry illumination." So I see a difference there.
Okay, I just want to clarify, because I've never heard this, no landscape lighting allowed before. And since it's, I couldn't write down everything you said, could you email that to Linda and myself so we can get that when we do the reso? Thank you.
The second part is under the landscaping section. So the way this is drafted, it references plants on the fire smart plant list on Fire Safe Marin's website. So one of them is just a grammatical or punctuation comment that it should be Fire Safe Marin's Fire Smart Plant List versus Fire Safe Marin Fire Smart Plant List. But that section, and again, it's the same in, in both codes, states that all landscaping shall be on the Fire Smart Plant List, which is then followed by a reference to our tree code, which says, "No undesirable tree species as defined by section 8.36.020 shall be planted." So there's one plant that is on our undesirable tree species list that is on Fire Safe Marin's Fire Smart List. So there's a difference there. And then many of our trees on our undesirable tree species list are not on either Fire Smart Marin's, I mean, Fire Safe Marin's Fire Smart Plant List or their fire-prone list. So my recommendation for this would be that we delete the reference to our tree code. Which, and just have the references be to Fire Safe Marin's Fire Smart Plant List.
Can I ask legal counsel to clarify, is is this entire section Fairfax-generated or California state-generated?
Janet, I can address that if you'd like.
Was that an answer? I couldn't hear you.
I can address that. It's Kylie. The landscaping section was created for Fairfax. The reason there's the two sections is that more to identify that this is already in the town's code, the undesirable tree species. The Fire Safe, Fire Smart Plant List was to try and encourage or basically require people to also make sure that they are fire smart plants. And that was done in a way to try and shortcut and get that all in so that we were getting fire safe plants in these projects. But it was created by by, for, for the town of Fairfax. Thank you.
And those are the only two changes I had.
I would like to make a couple of comments more than questions or clarification, since once we vote, then we're done. And I, I just want to say that I actually support SB9 and understand why the state of California went to this, because the market, the housing market does not create affordable housing. And I developed affordable housing for 30 years for city government. And the only affordable housing, I worked for cities and counties. The only affordable housing was funded by and developed by cities and counties and nonprofit housing developers. So it, it is, you know, kind of a last ditch effort on the part of the county to get affordable housing units that we so desperately need in California. And what I most appreciate about SB9 is that we do not need 3,000 to 5,000 square foot homes in Fairfax. I mean, if that's what you want, that's fine. I don't have a problem with it. But we, that's not what we need. We need small, affordable units in town. And so I see this as a wonderful opportunity to create infill housing. I think that people who think of this as, oh, the, the state is twisting our arm and forcing us to build these monster homes should, should take note that this is a really great affordable strategy for, for creating new housing and infill housing in particular. And I also have a comment about the short-term rentals that Commissioner Newton referenced as what is an apparent contradiction in what the town is doing, where the state of California says no short-term rentals on these split units that are, are now being allowed. And I can understand that, because we don't want a bunch of rental housing that isn't for local people. I guess what I'm saying is the a bunch of rental housing that isn't for local people. I guess what I'm saying is, the the incongruity is that we're saying no short-term rentals here, which I think is absolutely appropriate, but then we're saying, yes, let's do short-term rentals. Let's do Airbnbs. Let's really, let's go for it and do a whole program of short-term rentals, because supposedly it helps, what, it helps people pay for their housing? It helps people rent their house and go on vacation? No, I think it removes housing from the market. It removes what could be affordable housing and puts it into the vacation rental housing property, real estate thing that's going on that is so popular, which, you know, I love to go out of town somewhere and find a place myself, but I don't want Fairfax to become that. And I think that the incongruity there is that, on the one hand, we're pushing short-term rentals, Airbnb rentals, vacation rentals. And on the other hand, we're saying, no, we need to build housing, but it can't be short-term. It can't, it should be long-term, not just limited to thirty days. I don't want it to be fifty-day or sixty-day rental. I want it to be permanent affordable rentals for people who will live in our communities and be a part of that community, something that is affordable. And I think it's a mistake for the town, on the one hand, to be advocating for one type of short-term rental and not for another. I think we should go with the SB9 direction of no short-term rentals and let that settle in. And not rush to, at the same time, do the short-term rental, the holiday vacation rental thing. I don't really think it helps our community at all, and I don't think it's going to be a huge moneymaker as people think. So that's what I think about that. And the size restrictions are difficult. I think people in the community think that, oh, my God, every lot, we're now required to turn into two, three, four, five, six units. People are talking about, oh, my God, we're going to be able to build ten units. That's not the case. And I think there's misinformation or a misunderstanding of what this is all about in the community. It's about affordable, small-scale housing, and it provides a very affordable and realistic way that we can meet some of these housing obligations that we have. And people say, oh, the state is making us build all this housing. You know what? Our people, our community, need housing. We should look at it in terms of how can we, in a pragmatic way, Fairfax is not a town with a lot of money. I used to work for cities. We'd build twenty, fifty, a hundred units of affordable housing, but the cities had to contribute five to ten million dollars to buy the land. We had to secure fifteen, twenty different funding sources to build twenty units that were affordable, and Fairfax can't do that. So we need to look for simple ways that we can add housing. And I think there's, I like that SB9 finally clarifies that you can only get four units. You split a lot, you can do two units on each lot, that's true, but they have to be small. They can be, you know, eight hundred to twelve hundred square feet. But if it's a really small lot, if we're talking about a two thousand, okay, a three thousand square-foot lot, split into fifteen hundred, how are you going to work in a twenty-five-foot road access for an evacuation route? How are you going to work in thirty percent landscaping? How, you know, how are you going to work that into and a ten-foot setback? People have the impression that, oh, my God, this is going to create a gazillion housing units, but it's not as easy as it sounds. It's very tricky when you're looking at the size lots we have. And the state came up with this twenty-four hundred square-foot minimum lot that can be split. What can you build on twenty-four hundred square feet, for God's sakes, let alone twelve hundred square feet? So I think this will turn out to be more like our ADU and JADU program. That's the type of housing that SB9 will will provide and encourage, small, small units. And so I support this, and I don't support the short-term rental movement that we're going towards. So I just wanted to make that clear. And and otherwise, I'm ready to move forward with this item.
Commissioner Newton has her hand raised.
Thanks. Commissioner Fregoso, do I take it that, based on what you just said, you would be in favor of allowing for smaller units than what we're currently contemplating under this ordinance?
Well, actually, the state has indicated eight hundred square-foot minimum.
No, I think it was.
And yes, the state law, the state law stipulates that if you split a lot, the smallest lot you can split is twenty-four square feet, creating two twelve-hundred-square-foot parcels on which you can build two eight-hundred-foot or twelve-hundred-foot housing units, obviously, if it's a larger lot. But you can't build a twelve-hundred-square-foot unit on a twelve-hundred-square-foot lot. And so eight hundred is what the state, I believe, recommended. And Fairfax has a five-hundred-square-foot minimum that we, that the Planning Commission and Council adopted many years back for accessory units. I think our ADUs are five hundred square feet. And so I'm not sure how that got worked in, but, so, what was your question? So I I think, yeah, the five hundred to eight hundred square feet, and even eight hundred square feet on a really tiny lot will be difficult to build. So I don't think we're going to see every lot in town turning into a split lot. I think we're going to see more and more ADU-type units, which I think is terrific. Does that answer your question?
No, I think I'm more confused. I'm sorry. Is there, I thought that the I thought that the state didn't set a lower number. Am I incorrect?
We asked legal counsel.
You are correct. The state did not set a lower threshold. It said that we are not allowed to prohibit at least eight hundred square feet. So if there's any standards or otherwise that would preclude someone from building at least an eight hundred square foot, that doesn't mean they have to build eight hundred square feet. It means the standards need to allow eight hundred square foot unit, but it does not have a lower threshold of five hundred, correct?
And is Commissioner, is Chair Fregoso correct that Fairfax has its own minimum size for building a unit or a dwelling in the residential area?
I would defer to staff on that. That information and that standard came from staff, so it's highly possible that there is a minimum standard. It is, it was drafted, and we believe that it's defensible to say that you at least need to do five hundred square feet, but it's not legally required under the statute.
Okay, so what is the reason?
That's Linda.
Yeah, so I wasn't involved in drafting of this, but I thought that the I thought that the, I thought, I can't remember the name of it now. I'm so tired, you guys. I thought that either the building code or, help me out, you guys, it's the property management code set a minimum size that a unit could be, but I'm, off the top of my head, I'm not recalling what that is. And I'm wondering if the five hundred, that might be where the five hundred came from.
That's my understanding as well.
Yes, I believe it is from the building code.
Okay.
Okay, well, I guess, you know, when I think of ADU and JADU, I think of, you know, tiny extra unit. I don't necessarily think of a five-hundred-square-foot unit as little. Maybe it's because my house is like six hundred and fifty square feet total. And so I look at this from that perspective, and I think to myself, if we really wanted affordable housing, we would allow for smaller units, especially because that seems to be the only way in which we are tying affordability to new units in this town. We're not putting rental caps on anything in terms of the prices that people can charge for these units. We're not putting in any kind of, you know, ordinance to protect tenants from the high price of living in Fairfax. So I think if we're going to talk about size as the only means of keeping things affordable, we should put our money where our mouth is and say that it doesn't have to stop at five hundred feet, and you can go smaller. So that would be part of my recommendation. I see Commissioner, I have a couple of other things to say, but maybe I'll let Commissioner Green jump in.
Well, thank you. So the page five of twenty-one talks about unit size, the total floor area of each primary dwelling that is developed on the resulting lot shall be less than or equal to eight hundred feet and more than five hundred square feet. That's the way it's worded. Problem, the problem is, I've looked at the affordable housing parameters and the prices that are considered affordable in our area. And I also heard town council at their meeting when this was discussed. And there's a definite, you know, I think town council will take care of it, because there's a definite attitude on the town council that we want to be able to provide housing for the likes of our artists and musicians and others who, yoga teachers, whatever, who maybe can't, who want to live here, and we want them to live here, and who can't afford it. So I have a feeling town council is well geared towards this particular issue, and that we don't really need to debate it. And as I said, I'm kind of ready to make a motion to approve. And then the other hand, the Airbnb thing, we need to tax it. That's one thing. If they're going to, if they're going to do Airbnb, we should be getting some revenue from it in the town. And that's that's been my opinion for a long time. Okay, thank you. Those are my comments.
Well, I just will add, I just will add that the town also has a two hundred square-foot, I believe, minimum on a garage conversion. And do we not also have a smaller size limit for a JADU? A JADU is not required to be five hundred square feet. I don't know. No, don't pull it out. I'm just, I'm just saying, we have smaller units, but that's not the point here. The point is, this this ordinance says a minimum of five hundred or a maximum of eight hundred.
Does the commission have a different recommendation for the town council?
I'm fine with it as it's written.
Yeah, me too.
I have a different recommendation on a couple of items. I have a different recommendation with respect to the lower limit on the size. I have a different recommendation with respect to the matchy-matchy part of the ordinance that has, you know, you've got to look the same, because I think Fairfax is charming because of each structure having a quirky, different look potentially. I I think that when this is presented to the town council, staff should make sure to mark out the roads and areas in the town on a map that are designated evacuation routes. We heard from public comment at the last meeting where we entertained this item, that that was a significant issue. And I think identifying those evacuation routes in Fairfax and if, I don't think we have endangered species habitats marked out very well on a map, but those issues were on my list, as well as specific references to the general plan policies that are, you know, consistent with this proposal, and specifically calling those out in the in the ordinance would be a preference for me. And other than that, I could approve it, but it doesn't sound like any of the other commissioners are on board with my recommendations regarding size. I don't know where you guys are on the architectural matchingness of the other units. Thanks.
Actually, Mimi, I do concur with you. I don't think things should be matchy-matchy. And I think if someone built a three hundred square-foot home, I think it would be great.
So my comment on the matchy-matchy is that when we look at other applications that come before us for houses that would have, you know, let's say, a house and a garage, or a house and an ADU, assuming that the ADU would be of a size that would come to us, we typically look at those design criterias for having, let's say, the main house match the garage, and it be kind of an encompassing package. So I think there's a difference between that and saying that every lot has to all look the same with the houses on them on different lots. So I think there's a difference between you know, the perspective of matchy-matchy within a house, a primary unit, and its accessory unit, or another primary unit on the same lot versus looking at a whole block where they all look the same. So I'm fine with that aspect of the draft code that, you know, the two-unit projects or whatever have some similarity on the same lot.
I'd like to just chime in on the matchy-matchy issue. I think I read it more as congruent, and I'm in support of it, actually. And I do think it's talking about projects within itself, not matching the next-door neighbors, or the streetscape, or anything down the road. It's just saying, if you have a couple of buildings on the same lot, let's make them congruent, is how I would read it. And I'm in support of that. With regard to the size, I'd go as low as two hundred. I think it's a good idea to go lower.
Town Attorney Coulson has her hand raised.
All I was, let me see where, yeah, I'm off. All I was going to say was that we don't need to have concurrence amongst the commission for recommendations. We're happy to put them all in there and say, two commissioners recommended this, majority of the commissioners recommended that. We're happy to do that. So we don't have to reach a consensus on suggested changes. Thank you.
One last thing, it's not a change, but I very much like It's not a change, but I very much like the new wording. I may have said this already. I'm sorry if I did, where clearly. And the other thing I I really like, as you all know, is this chart uh that shows. Uh, I think this chart would be really helpful for people to see that, oh, let's see, if I just have a regular lot uh that's big enough, I can build four units. Oh, if I have a lot with a non-conforming duplex, I can keep my duplex and add a little house and an ADU. Oh, if I split a lot or I do a a two lot, guess what? I can put four units on it. I love that it's only four units. People are, people are thinking, oh, this means I can build 10 units. And even a prior iteration said we could do six to eight altogether on a combined split lot. But I love this clarification. And uh, I think it will help people to accept it more readily, realizing that we're not talking about five or 10 units here. We're talking about a little house with an ADU on.
So my question for staff would be tonight's process. So we have a resolution here um that really basically says that we approve or don't approve what's before us in the ordinance. So how do you want us with people's varying changes or suggestions that doesn't really necessarily fit the the resolution?
What we have done in the past is we have modified the resolution to include suggestions for changes. Um, and we have, we have had um approval with suggested changes so that you're telling the council, uh, yes, we recommend you approve this as long as you do or consider changes A, B, C, and D. Um, that seems to have worked. Okay, I think it worked well the other night for um for uh the outdoor dining.
That's right. It did work well for outdoor dining the way that uh you provided that report to council.
Commissioner Green has his hand raised.
Commissioner Green, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, you know, listening to Commissioner Newton, one, one thing that she said I kind of agree with and and is another recommendation here is that in the ordinance, we have all these wherashes, but that we don't have a whereas that does mention what sections of our general plan this conforms with. And I think that part is a good idea for the legal record, frankly. And and I think we don't, you know, that's that's something that we um, I would recommend with with Commissioner Newton that we do is is have another whereas perhaps um could be styled that way. And uh, you know, the the Town Council um approves uh based on its uh agreement that the following sections of the uh general plan um are uh are in in uh conformity with this, something like that. And then list those sections. That would be, that would be a great idea. Otherwise, you know, I'm ready to make a motion here.
Any further comments? Questions? Not hearing any. Commissioner Green, are you still ready with your motion?
Uh, sure, let's, let's give it a try. Um, and the motion is to move approval of Resolution Number twenty, 2022 dash oh three, Resolution of the Planning Commission of Fairfax recommending the Town Council with our comments, approval of an ordinance uh concerning lot splits and duplex development pursuant to SB nine.
So just for clarity, how will those comments be added on to this?
What we'll do is we'll uh we'll write up everything we've heard. I'm sorry, Linda, I didn't mean to jump in, but I can't hear you, Linda. Are you muted?
No, that's because I just turned myself off when I thought you were gonna answer. Do you want me to answer?
Well, what I was gonna say was, and tell me if you agree with this or not. What I would do is I would write up, I would modify the resolution to include all the comments that are here tonight, heard tonight, so that this motion um passes the resolution with along with all of the comments. And we put those comments in the resolution. Uh, Chair Ferguson can look at it when she comes to sign it uh to make sure that she, it's what we, you know, said, what was said tonight. And then um we can go ahead and forward that to the council.
Yeah, that that's how we just did the last one. We put them in the resolution as part of the resolution, so.
But there is a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
Motion, uh, Commissioner Green, seconded by Commissioner Kelly.
Okay, I'll call.
Can we?
Green?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Chair Ferguson?
Aye. Says, is there a 10 day appeal? There's no appeal on this, is there?
Another thing that might be great to to do here is to add a map so that people can, people, that, you know, the public can see what this covers because it doesn't cover the whole town. And a lot of the stuff we've been talking about tonight is as if it covers the whole town. It doesn't, it's a small area. So I think a map would be a good idea as an addendum or something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to Legal Counsel for coming back and back again and back again to help us move this along.
Thank you. I appreciate.
As as requested uh by Commissioner Swift, we will add, let me look at our agendas, see where we are, if I'm missing something.
Minutes.
I know we have the minutes, but where's my agenda? You had wanted to have a Commissioner comments and requests on the agenda, which we agreed to add. Did you want to do the minutes first? I think we should do our, how would you like to do it, Cindy?
Let's do the minutes first.
Okay, then, I'm sure you have some notes.
I have a question um for Planner Neil on the minutes. So page four of the minutes, um Frank Egger's comments. It says, uh, Mr. Frank Egger made the following comments. He asked if this is the project that was built with no permits. Whoops, wait a minute. He asked if the access to the main house would continue to come from San Anselmo through Francis Drive. And then the following sentence just says, Principal Planner Neil explained, but doesn't say what. So if you could elaborate that and we could update the minutes with that, that would be my change.
What I explained was, no, the access, so the 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 emergency access is gonna come from forest and and residents of the new unit are gonna continue to access through Francis. Francis is what I said, so I'll change.
So thank you. That was the only change I had.
Anyone else?
I will move to approve uh the minutes um with the correction, uh, the minutes of the April 28, 2022 uh Planning Commission meeting with the corrections noted by uh Commissioner Swift.
I don't know if I can second it. I was absent at that meeting, but I'd be glad to second it.
I'll second it.
That might be better. Thank you. So we have a a motion.
Well, the minutes say that uh Commissioner Green was present, so maybe that needs to be corrected.
He's muted, I can't hear him.
There's actually some comments credited.
24, 22.
Commissioner Green.
April 28th.
April 28th, got the wrong minutes, okay.
And does anyone remember, was Robert there?
No.
Okay, so there were two missing, all right.
At the last meeting, Robert was here.
No, this is the meeting in April. Not the, not the special meeting, yeah.
And wa- was Commissioner Green at the meeting on the 28th?
There, everyone's saying, no, he was not.
There, there's some comments that are credited to you, Commissioner Green.
No, it's, there's something wrong. I only have the minutes of uh, I don't have those minutes for some reason.
He even made a motion with me.
He made a motion with you to approve.
Yes, I know. Hold on a second here. Let me, let me see what's going on.
I can't remember if he was there or not.
No, I I'm sure I was there, but they say, say I'm not there. Um, so that.
This, this.
No, I had April 24th. So these are 28th, yes, okay, there we are.
Minutes indicate that you abstained from voting on the minutes from the 24th of March, so uh, if that helps.
My notes that I took on that meeting says that the only one that was absent was Robert.
Yes, I had the wrong minutes. And I recall I was there anyway.
Okay, so your second of my motion stands? Even though you had the wrong minutes?
Yes, I guess so. Well, it was seconded also by uh.
I just need to know, were you at the meeting of April 28th? Do I delete you or do I leave you in?
He was there.
I was looking at the wrong minutes and I didn't notice the date till I scrolled up. And then it said, it said I was absent, so that's it. I've clarified that now. I've, it's, I I was there and that the minutes are there. And I was joking that I wasn't there. I was just saying, it says I wasn't there, but never mind.
I thought Brett seconded it.
To uh to approve these minutes.
We have a motion by Newton, seconded by Commissioner Green, who was definitely here this evening. Can we have the roll?
Okay, Green?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Chair Ferguson?
Aye. Cute. And we should uh actually uh, if we can remember to put this on our uh agendas, Commissioner comments and requests, please. We don't always have them, but.
Staff will do our best. I'm, I'm. That's all we can ask.
That's fine. And if you leave it off, don't worry about it. We'll just do it anyway.
lest we forget, I don't think we have a principal planner right now. And Linda, I'm sure, is taking.
You don't have a planning director.
She's, you know, doing the heroic thing of taking all this work on yourself. And um, don't put yourself down. You're doing a much better job than I, than could possibly be done absent the principal planner here. Come on, guys.
We got in, we, we gotta hire a principal planner.
And not to leave out Kara either, who's really. And while we're at it, Tony, our recording secretary, who uh, I don't know how manages to do a pretty good job on these minutes, and she's not even here. Okay, uh, Commissioner Swift, you had asked for Commissioner comments.
I just asked for it to be put on the agenda because it wasn't on the agenda. I don't have any comments. I just wanted it on the agenda.
Does any commissioner have comments? Do we have any clarification on uh the the May, extra meeting in May?
You mean the meeting that we're trying to hold in June? The the joint meeting? I was just gonna try to talk to you guys about that. The joint meeting between the council and the planning commission?
This is our main meeting.
Right.
I have a comment. Uh, Commissioner comment.
About the meetings or?
No, uh, a, just a general Commissioner comment, nothing to do with any particular.
Oh, go ahead before we move on to the meeting.
I just wanna say a couple of things. One is we installed solar on our house and I love watching the meter run backwards and I recommend it for anybody who it's feasible for. And you can do it if you're earning money. You can actually get tax credits. It didn't cost anything, so think about that. Number two is there's a number of signs around town that are in very derelict conditions. Some of them are protecting children. And I would like to see um, I guess, what the town um, whoever's in charge of that signage.
Are you talking about like street signs?
Street signs, that's not the big thing. The big thing is there's signs that say children at play or um,
But were they put up by the, were they put up by the town or were they?
Yes, absolutely. They're official California state signs. Some of them are, some of them are absolutely obscure. There's some stop signs you can't even tell.
The way to get that, the way to get that taken care of is to note the location and go into the public works on on the, on the town website. And there's a form that.
I've done that, I've done it.
You've done that and they're not getting any response?
Sent them in, right, nothing.
How long ago? Because you're supposed to get a number so that you can then call up like the town manager and say, this is my number and nobody's addressing my item?
Okay, I'll try again.
Try again because there should be a.
You gotta take walks around town. It's a problem a lot of places, signage. Okay, that's all, that's my comments.
No, actually, Phil, since you mentioned your solar, which I think is great. Uh, there's so many trees and big buildings around my house. I cannot get solar, but I just put in two Tesla batteries. Two Tesla batteries that will run my house for three days, will run my entire house for three days if the power is out. Run my fridge, run my hot tub, run my washer dryer, run my TV and give me Wi-Fi.
Yeah, totally, and they charge from the power grid.
Obviously, I don't have solar, so when they run down, then I have to wait a day and a half for them to charge up again when we get power. But in a seven day power outage, I can have air conditioning, I can have heat, I can take a hot bath. It's fantastic.
I am getting pressure from the clerk because we, we're trying to set this special meeting. It's a joint meeting between the council and the commission. And I have heard back from some of you, but not all of you. So um, you know, we're, we're, what I mean? The June 15th or June 29th? Oh, did Janet leave? Do I have those dates right? Did Janet leave?
I am still here, hang on.
I have the dates, right, right?
June 15th now because the council, the 29th didn't work for them.
Okay, well, you know what? That's not good because the most of the commissioners that have responded are only available the 29th, not the 15th.
Okay, well, we'll just have to report that back then. Um, yeah, they're having a meeting on the 15th anyway. And they wanted to take a portion of it and have a joint meeting with the planning commission as a check in, I guess. And then just a portion of it. It wasn't gonna be the whole meeting because they have a lot of other things they have to do on the 15th. Um, it's already looking like a full agenda. And um, but the 29th didn't work. There were gonna be some who were out of town. So we'll have to just report that back and see what else we can do. Maybe it'll be July or August.
Also, Linda, do you have a a sense of what comes at us at our next meeting?
Not really. It's, you know, um, now it's, it's like four weeks away. And so it's really hard for us to figure out who's. And so it's really hard for us to figure out who's gonna be completed, you know? Um, I can tell you a few that I know are going to be on, but it's, that's not gonna give you a real picture of what the agenda's gonna look like. It's just.
Yeah. Well, what tentatively might?
Well, so, so we, I'm hoping to have the B of A ATM that they wanna put in, um, where Avatar, in the wall that used to be Avatar, right? Just because B of A is closed now and I'm hearing from a lot of citizens that, you know, they have to go all the way to Santa Fel. There's no B of As. This, I mean.
They don't run their ATM anymore either.
Nope. I, I don't know. Are the ATMs still open? Well, they're going to be closing them. They're going to be shutting them down, right? So I don't, I'm, I'm trying to get them through so that we don't have an AT, a B of A ATM desert in this portion of Marin County. Because I thought I was told by one of the residents that the nearest ones are in, in San Rafael. Is there one in San Anselmo? I don't think so. Yeah, so that's a kind of a long way for people, you know, in this part of the world to have to go to get cash. Anyway, so that's one of them, but, but they're not quite ready yet. But, but I mean, I might even put them in front of, you know, some, someone else. But we'll see. You know what I'm saying? I have to make these kinds of decisions. It's just too early for me to know. You're gonna have a new house at seventy-five Pine. Um, see, I'm so tired. That's all I can think of right now. But anyway, yeah. Cara has another one that's almost ready, but I can't recall the address. And, and you know, we have a lot of applicants that think they should be declared complete and are putting a lot of pressure on us all the time to be on the next agenda. So there's, you know, we don't know who's gonna be successful.
Comment there is, it's not complete until it's really complete.
Yeah.
Every I dotted, every T crossed.
Oh, no, but they wanna.
Speaking of tired, can I make a motion to adjourn the planning?
Glad you, you read my mind.
I'll second that.
Motion Newton and Green to adjourn.
Should I call a roll? Green?
Yes.
Newton?
Aye.
Swift?
Yeah.
Kelly?
Yes.
Chair Ferguson?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
The meeting is adjourned.